So, good evening. Welcome to the Committee of the Hall, City of Groton Committee of the Hall for Monday, February 12th, being held in the city, in council chambers.
So, Claudia Procurer, please call the roll.
Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Counselor Patterson, Counselor Artali, and Counselor Sheffield are present.
Okay, thank you. So, we're gonna start with some of the staff items to get those out of the way before Russell Blair gets here. So, Mary, we're gonna do Beach and Parks first. So, the first was Rules and Regulations. So, if you could walk us through the changes?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, the Rules and Regulations. So, on page one, there was, a member of the community came out to a Beach and Parks Committee meeting back in December and made a recommendation that city employees get the beach pass for their vehicles at the city of Groton resident rate, at forty dollars, anybody, so any employee of the city. It was voted by the committee five to one to move that forward. I did find out also from talking to the former chairman of the Beach and Parks Committee that it was something that's been done in the past. So, that was the first recommendation out of the Rules and Regulations is that city employees would get the forty dollar rate for a pass. Do you want me to go through all of the pages and then ask questions?
Yes, just go through the pages and then we'll ask questions from the council.
Okay, on page two, under D, replacement pass, all we did was underline and bold the language in there regarding if we needed to get a replacement pass that we need, and even if it comes in pieces, we need the, the old pass to replace it with. Under G, we used to have, the Parks and Recreation Office was open Monday through Friday, eight to four thirty. We just put during, during business hours because now that the building is not open on Fridays. And then this way, too, it gives us flexibility if the hours do change in, in the, here in the building. On page three, under walk-ins, residents who walk into the beach with an ID can bring as many guests as they want. So, that was a question this past summer. How many people can I walk in with? A carload can come in with a car, there's no limit to how many people in our car, so we, we're not gonna limit how many people can walk in with a resident. On page four, on number thirteen, last year, the word pop-ups, which are those twelve, those ten by ten heavy, like those metal pop-ups, was omitted from last year's Rules and Regulations, so we just added that in, because that was removed two years ago. Page five, last year, the Rules and Regulations for the beach were approved before the ordinance changed for smoking and vaping. So, we just wanted to get the language in there so that the patrons who buy a beach pass are aware of what our, our policy is and, and our city ordinance is regarding smoking and vaping. And so, we wanted to get the language so that they could see that. It's easier for the supervisors on staff to show it to them as opposed to try to explain it to them, and it would be on the bulletin boards at the beach. And those are the changes for the Rules and Regulations this year.
Okay. Questions or comments on Rules and Regulations, Deputy Mayor Depot?
Well, my first question is actually for you, Mayor. I, I don't remember if we did this last year or not, but I thought that we, all of these things that kind of come to us annually, we're going to have the changes in red, but I don't have that on mine. Oh, it printed out. Oh, but not on mine.
Go to the, can you go to the, go to the attachment? Because there's a body one in the email, and then there's an attachment to the email?
Okay.
Because I questioned that today with Val, and I'm like, I went into the email, I'm like, it's not in red.
I'm sure, what it is, is whoever created the PDF did it in black and white, that's fine.
Okay.
Never mind, then disregard my question. No, no, it's fine. And then I forgot my other question. Did the regular rate go up at all, or that's the same rate as last year?
The rates stayed the same as last year, because we had an eight to, eight dollar to a thirty dollar increase last year for the rates for beach passes. So, the committee decided to hold steady this year, and they'll look at them moving forward.
Okay, because it was thirty-two for a resident before, and then last year, we changed it to forty?
Correct.
That's all.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Sheffield?
I'm looking for regarding pets on the beach.
Yep, it's num-
What page is that?
It's numbered five, under, on page four, the ordinance, number five, rule number five.
Okay. What about the off-season regarding pets on the beach? Wasn't there something that the dogs could not roam on the beach itself? Is that stipulated anywhere here?
It's, it's in the ordinance. We do, we do state that during the off-season, state Connecticut Regulations of Department of Public Health, and that's, that's the language that's on the signs that are down there. And it's also in the ordinance.
Okay.
So, instead of putting, unless you want us to put the whole ordinance in there, we kind of refer to it there.
Yeah, I mean, it's just in case someone doesn't see it, it's, you know, it's in our-
But these are, yeah, never mind. These are not just for, are these during beach season, or is these, this is primarily during the season, right?
Primarily during the season, but we do try to enforce what we can during, all year.
Yeah.
But it is a DPH requirement.
Right.
And it is well-posted in the off-season.
Just in case someone didn't understand, the DPH have it, you know, something like that.
I understand, but if you're off-season, you're, if you're off-season, you're probably not looking at these.
Okay.
I mean, pragmatically speaking, I mean, if the council wants to put them in there, we can put them in there, but I, I'm not sure, Deputy Mayor Depot?
I'm confused about what's missing.
So, the ordinance talks about the beach, it talks about all our parks, it talks about other, so we just, there's a, there's A, B, and C in the ordinance, so we just pulled out the B part, because that's the part that actually impacts the beach property.
Right, that's what I mean, it, it has the part that says the timeframe from Memorial Day through Labor Day.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, it references the DPH-
Right.
-regulations.
Yeah, my-
I'm just saying, is there something missing in there that we would want to add? Because I think that, I mean, that's, in terms of, because the whole thing is quite long-
Correct.
I think that's a good summation of the important parts.
Well, that, my issue was just the off-season, not during the in-season, just stipulating something off-season regarding the beach and the, and the pets.
But if you read the second part of that-
Yeah.
It says during the off-season.
Yeah, Department, yeah, just in case someone doesn't refer to that, it's something that, at least they'll know that we have and are listing. As I said, from Memorial Day to Labor Day is great, yeah, but as far as the off-season part, it's not stipulated in writing, but yet, sure, we go, refer to Department of Public Health, but someone might not refer that, you know. I'm just saying, an addition to that might assist the, the resonance, so.
We, so Stephen, just to address, I do carry the city ordinance in full in my vehicle in the off-season, so if there's anybody that's on the property and I see they're on the beach, on the sand, and the, or in our swim area and the land adjacent to it, which is the language, we'll hand them the ordinance so they see the whole thing.
Okay.
Okay? Does that help?
Yeah, I mean, it's something that, that at least they know of that ordinance, it's just in case they don't, you know, like I said, it's not stipulated in the resolution, so.
Any other questions or comments, Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. So, for the military discount with ID, is this just for active duty, National Guard, reservists?
We take it for anybody for a beach pass. So, if they can show us some type of ID that they're military, they get the five dollar discount for a beach pass.
Okay, so this, something I've experienced myself, so I have a VIT card, it's Veterans' Identification Card, so it's not a typical ID card, it does have a picture on it, but it's stating that you are a veteran, would that be allowed?
Hmm, okay. Yep. We didn't put any stipulations on it last year, we, if anybody showed us anything that was military-
Okay.
-recognized, we gave them the five dollars.
Okay, all right, thank you for clarifying.
Yep.
Is that it?
Yep, that's it, thank you.
All right, sorry. Counselor Norris?
Can you please remind me, actually, I don't know, so I'm not gonna say remind me, can you tell me what is, again, you just said it, the State of Connecticut Regulation of the Department of Public Health, section one, da-da-da-da, what is that?
So, that is the, the regulation set forth by the Department of, Department of Health in the state of Connecticut-
Yeah.
-regarding domestic animals in the waterfronts where people swim in the land adjacent to.
So, how specifically does that regulation affect Eastern Point Beach?
So, we tried to have it there for the off-season, so during this, from Memorial Day to Labor Day, there's no pets, dogs allowed at all on the property in any capacity.
Right.
Parking lot, grass, sidewalks. So, in the off-season, they're allowed on the property, this is our goal, to keep them off our, out of our swim area, so out of the area where people swim in, and the land adjacent to, which is the sand. So, that way, that doesn't get, you know, used, that people aren't having their dogs poop on the sand and leave it there.
So, in this, it says, dogs are permitted in the park other than a sandy area?
So, the Department of, the Connecticut Regulation from the Department of Public Health says that domestic animals are not allowed in your immediate swim area in the land adjacent to. That's their language, from the Connecticut Department of Health. So, we have that posted on signs down at the beach, and we put it in the, and it's in the city ordinance regarding allowing any kind of domestic animal in our swim area and land adjacent to.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
Can I just, I just want to clarify that? Because we have other sandy areas, it's like designated public swim areas, right?
Correct.
So, like Griswold Point, where there is a sandy waterfront area, but that is not-
Correct.
-a public swim area, so people can take their dogs there, and behind the Z House also is not a public swim area, even though it's sandy.
There's a small little beach in, actually, in front of the Z House, it's on the front side, that is, is, it's not, it's, it's actually posted, no waiting or swimming in this area, so domestic animals are allowed in that area.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Counselor Sheffield, do you have your hand up?
Yes, regarding, was it out-of-state residents? Was that something, or out-of-state travel, was, I'm looking for it, I saw something to where, or you had to be a resident, let's say, no people traveling from out-of-state, I guess, if they have a summer home, they can't get the, the pass, I guess?
Well, anybody can buy a pass.
Okay.
It's all based on, it's all based on your residency of your registration, your car registration.
Okay.
But if you have a rental property down at, say, Tyler Avenue, Shaw Avenue, you can, you can bring your tax bill in, or any kind of documentation that shows that you pay taxes on that property.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? All right, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting, February twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, Mary, move into user fees?
Okay, so our user fees, the first one, obviously, is on page two, it coincides with the Rules and Regulations, where we have our, the city employee rate for forty dollars. Then our next page would be page four, and this is for our summer playground program. There was a lengthy and healthy discussion with the Beach and Parks Committee regarding our fees for our summer playground, or what some people refer to as summer camp. We used to have a full summer rate for three hundred dollars for eight weeks, and in twenty twenty-one, we started doing a weekly fee, because some parents didn't want to pay the whole fee of three hundred dollars. So, the committee wants to go back strictly just to a weekly free, fee. One of the biggest discussions on this, going this route, was the families who were paying the, three hundred dollars for eight weeks, it works out to thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents a week, and they thought the jump to fifty dollars was gonna be a lot. But then, we brought in the field trips, which are gonna be included in our fees this year, and that's another eleven dollars a week, so it came out to forty-one, forty-eight, fifty. So, the recommendation for the full-day summer, summer playground program would be fifty dollars for residents for an early bird, and then after Memorial Day, it would jump to sixty dollars for a resident for the full-day program. And then non-residents, we allow non-residents in our summer playground, would go to eighty-five and ninety-five, of which, our weekly fees in the past, in two thousand and two, two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two was six, fifty and sixty. So, we're kind of in line still where we were for our residents, we just kind of want to gradually get to that weekly fee to kind of get up to where other communities are charging for their weekly summer program. Our goal this, this year is to do the weekly fee and then also include the field trips, because right now, parents have to come up with that money halfway through the summer for a trip here or a trip there, so now, once they pay for everything, pay their weekly fee, they'll, the week they pay for their, they're set, and that we don't have to worry about having kids not being able to pay for the field trip, because it's already done. So, the recommendation for the, for full-day program is fifty and six, fifty and eighty-five early bird, sixty and ninety-five after Memorial Day, and then the half-day program, which is over at eleven-thirty, is thirty and forty, and forty-five and fifty-five.
Okay, please move on.
The next one is on page five, and our, our use for our fields, our field fees for group number two, which is like your AAU teams, and your teams that aren't like Babe Ruth, or Little League, or, we're thirty-five and forty-five, which is extremely low compared to the communities around us. They actually do it per hour, we actually do it per game, so we wanted to keep it per game, so they raised it fifty-five and seventy-five, and they did the same with adult leagues, we have three adult leagues that use our fields, and we just wanted to kind of get up, up to where this, you know, where everybody else is, so we're in line with the rest of southeastern Connecticut. On page six, we took over the auditorium and the rental of that on July third per, per resolution, and we have guidelines that we follow for the Zaburski House, so we just kind of wanted to mimic that, so that way, we have some guidelines as to what groups fall where, so that the, you know, you know, like, group one is, you know, this, Beach and Parks wanted to use the auditorium, or any other committee, there would be no fee, which falls in line with the Zaburski House, so we just wanted to get that in our user fees, so we have that recognized in, in, in the Rules and Reg, user fees for everybody to see.
Okay.
And that is all.
Questions or comments on user fees? Counselor Norris?
All right. Sorry, Ms. Hill. So, back to camp.
Okay.
So, setting aside benchmarking with other communities, where do we fall with this new pricing that you're proposing in that recovery rate? Are we fifty-five percent, seventy-five percent?
Well, I, I don't know, because we haven't done a weekly fee before. So, I, I wouldn't know how many parent, so we have, it's hard, because right now, when we have a family sign up a kid for eight weeks, and they might come five weeks out of the eight, this would give us a better idea of how many kids we're actually having every, every week, as opposed to, you know, we might have a hundred and fifty kids registered for a week, but only seventy-five of them show up, because they decided that, based on having the full, I think I'll have a better answer for that after I get a year of this under my belt, and I could probably answer that a little better next year.
One of the things, though, that we are looking at is getting a higher recovery rate than what we've had in the past, and trying to get Parks and Rec to be more self-sustaining, which is going to your question.
Well, no, my question is, because if we're getting to more sustainable rate, then we need to look at change in this recovery percentage. But my bigger question was, so we're about to get into budget season, and I'm guessing in during the budget season, we'll be told, hey, my revenue is gonna be X dollars. So, realizing these are the new numbers, I'm trying to think ahead and go, okay, how did the numbers change in fiscal year twenty-four?
Sure.
Because we're, we're putting these into effect now, and people get a registered Memorial Day, so I was just trying to get a sense of where we are in that.
I understand where you're coming from, yep, got it.
I can present that at my budget presentation.
Okay. So, give us something then.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I just wanted to understand, so there's no more one flat rate for eight weeks?
Correct.
It's a weekly rate?
Correct.
So, I mean, that is an increase, and if they were to go the entire time, it is a little bit higher, but since you said the-
Field trips.
-field trips are included, that is a good deal.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I'll take a motion to move this to mayor and council of twenty February twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Chief? Go ahead, OPM grant, OPM grant acceptance?
Thank you, sir. So, the OPM grant is for body cameras, it'll also cover dash cams, which go in the vehicles. So, unfortunate, and, and we'll talk about this in the next resolution, but what happened this year is, one of the manufacturers for our body cameras in the vehicle said that they were going to cease doing business in that arena, therefore, it left us with a gap. So, we had to go out and look for a vendor who could replace our vehicle cameras and body cameras. And as part of that process, we were looking for funding sources. OPM offers one, one-time funding source for cameras, that's a result of the twenty-twenty Police Accountability Bill. After that law came out, which requires cameras, then the state also put some funding available. It is a thirty percent refund, so we have to spend the money first. That fifty-three thousand dollars that you're looking at is based on a cost of two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars, which again, is the next item on the agenda as far as the resolutions are concerned. So, we did apply for that fifty-three, I believe that we're going to be successful on that. It's a one-time grant, it's, 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 it's pretty much an automatic-type process. We actually had OPM fill out the paperwork for us on that, they did the, fill in the blanks, and we've been, we've been told that that is the amount that we're entitled to based on the cost. And that's it.
Any questions or comments on the OPM grant acceptance? Deputy Mayor Depot?
Well, maybe my questions would be better suited to the next-
Okay.
-thing, I think.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Counselor Sheffield?
How many, how many cameras would this be with the fifty-three thousand?
So, again, it's a thirty percent match, but we would be looking to replace thirty-nine cameras altogether, thirty of them would be body cameras, nine of them are vehicle cameras.
Okay, hearing none, I'll take a motion to move this to mayor and council meeting of February twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, Axon Body, Axon Car Videos and Body-Worn Cameras?
Right, so we didn't originally arrive at Axon, we actually went out and looked at three manufacturers after data nine-one-one, who was the one that we were using announced the stopping of, of business. What we found was, there is a problem with the data migration, meaning that to move from one system to another, they charge you for it. We were looking at about a sixty thousand dollar cost just to move the two years of data that we've accrued in the vehicle cameras. So, that, when we started looking at all of the, the total cost for it, that put Axon at the low end for us, as far as a vendor is concerned. The good thing about Axon is, we don't have to migrate all the data. We already have a system, a ten-terabyte system, which is in the cloud, which stores our body cameras, it's called Evidence Vault. So, our, all of our body camera data already goes to that. So, the only thing we'd be looking to move at this point is the existing vehicle camera data that we've collected, and right now, it's, that sits on premise, and last time I talked to AT, that, IT, rather, that's sitting at about five terabyte, we'd be moving that to a ten-terabyte system with this move to Axon. And then, again, that would also be cloud-based, it, none of that would be our resident here, and it would go into the Evidence Vault as well. The other thing that helps us out is, both videos are linked, right now, they're not. So, in other words, if I have a car video and a body camera of the same incident, I have two different searches that I have to perform. If I go with this system under Evidence Vault, if I put in the case number, it links all the videos together from that incident, so it's very easy as far as retrieval is concerned. This would be a five-year contract that we're looking at, we're currently in a five-year contract, we're actually at the end, we just made our last payment for our five years, so this is timely for us, and we get one change-out as part of the process, meaning that it's techn, because technology doesn't sit still, right? So, as technology advances, then we get, we get the software updates anyway, but we get the change-out in hardware one time.
Questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Depot?
So, just so I understand, so, we're replacing thirty-nine cameras?
Correct.
Did they, would they need to have been replaced anyways, or we have to replace them because they're not supported anymore by the previous vendor?
So, law says that we have to have cameras not only on the person, but also in the car, that's as of twenty-twenty. So, we had to have replaced those nine anyway, the ones that were data nine-one-one, those had to get replaced. The timeliness as far as the body cams are concerned is because we're at the end of our five-year anyway, we started in twenty-nineteen, it's twenty-twenty-four, we just made that payment at the beginning of the year, so at the end of this year, we'd be looking, or actually, at the next budget season, we'll be looking to get a replacement for those cameras, so we'll take advantage of it now. Here's the other thing, this project doesn't, even if I said yes today, it still doesn't kick off until October because of the lead-in time, so we're almost at the end of twenty-twenty-four anyway.
So, we've had our current body cams for five years?
Correct.
The same exact camera?
Correct. Well, we've had, again, Axon usually gives you an upgrade, so the exact body cam models that you have now are not the ones that you started with.
Okay, so, but we would have to replace the physical camera regardless?
We'd have to enter into another contract with Axon, yes.
What happens to the old ones?
The old body cams?
Yeah.
They phase out.
Physically, what happens to them?
We send them back, or we keep them.
So, we're leasing the cameras?
No, we, no, I'm sorry, we wouldn't send them back, we keep them, but they're of no use to us from that point forward, because we're going into a new system.
So, are we collecting them in a box in the basement?
Yep.
Okay.
And then, at some point, we're gonna have to determine how we can get rid of them-
Correct.
-since they were bought with taxpayer money.
Right, so the JAG grant, from what I'm told, the JAG, going back and looking at how we purchased them originally, we did not go through the OPM grant, we went through a JAG grant process and bought them with that, which is an annual-type money funding that we get anyway.
So, do we need to replace them because they physically do not work anymore?
So, you only get service for five years, you get a contract service for five years, meaning access to the Evidence Vault and extended warranty. You only get it for five, well, you can sign a ten-year contract, I wouldn't suggest we sign a ten-year contract, because it's just too far in the future, if you don't sign a ten-year, then you get a five-year.
Okay, I guess what I'm getting at is, the contract that we're gonna sign, the money is for the contract, and it comes with new cameras?
Correct.
There is no separating that?
No.
That is the only option?
Correct.
So, there is no savings of, oh, we stretch another year with the cameras that we have?
Yeah, we were looking for a trade-in value, and there is no trade-in value on them.
Okay.
Just so you know.
Well, that, that's what I'm kind of getting at.
No, I understand.
I just want to make sure, because I don't, you know, this is, again, new, we've only had to have the body cameras for so long, so-
Right.
-just trying to make sure that we're covering all our bases in terms of recoverability or-
It was a logical question that I asked, I'm like, hey, can we get any value back on these? The answer is, they don't have any value.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to move this to mayor and council of February twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
We have a motion in a se-
Second?
Second. We now have a motion in a second, any, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief Burton.
I would, I'll take a motion to add fire truck repair to the agenda.
So moved.
So.
We have a motion in a second, Chief, if you could come up?
We'll vote.
So? You, oh, did we take a vote?
No.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. I'm sorry, I thought I took a vote. Well, thank you for catching that. All right, come on up. Now come on up, please pass your information out. This came to me Friday afternoon. I received a briefing and I don't remember if we've discussed, I think we might have discussed this, that we had a fire truck that needed repair and we sent it out, but we didn't know how much it was going to cost. We now know how much it's going to cost because they repaired it. So we have to bring it to the council to get permission to pay for the repair. And Chief, I'll let you walk us through it.
All right, good evening. So as the mayor said, the transmission on the engine went. So we had Detroit Allison, who are the experts, come evaluate it. It needed to be towed and replaced. And so what happened was on larger transmissions, they actually have like a radiator to cool the fluid. The radiator failed and allowed the antifreeze basically to mix with the transmission fluid and that caused the transmission to burn out. So we had to repair it, but there was only an estimate because the radiator, the part from Pierce, who's the truck manufacturer, it's discontinued. They didn't have it anymore. So that radiator had to be sent out and to a company, just like you would a car radiator, to either be manufactured new or refurbished. So they could only estimate how much that would cost. So that came back, actually within the estimate, but the problem was that the fittings, you know, they had to be custom work in order to make it fit to the truck. So if you look at the invoice, you know, it kind of lists what they did and the prices, like the mayor said, it's over $10,000. We knew it was going to be over $10,000, but we needed to fix the truck, you know, emergently. And we did not have a solid number. This is the solid number, they finished Friday. We picked the truck up, it's back in service, and this is the cost.
Okay, questions or comments for the chief? David and Mayor Depot.
How does this repair, so it's $19,559.86, how is it impacting your budget for this year?
If we move it towards to a resolution, I will take it out of my budget. You know, so at the end of the year, I hope that that will be okay. But I have money in what we call the truck account, and I call the truck account. Starts at $40,000 for the year. This will take me down to a few thousand dollars, which is not a lot when you have to maintain the whole fleet. That's for everything that we have. But there are other accounts, you know. My plan is to keep it in my budget, out of my operating budget. That's my plan.
So do you think, because it's like February, March, April, June? Do you anticipate any other big repairs? Or, I know that doesn't mean, I know we can't see the future. My question is, like, do you foresee, do we have any trucks like struggling right now that we think we're going to have to maybe find other funds for? Or do we?
No, so we do have a truck that is the same year. I think we talked about this before. It's the latter truck, but it's the same manufacturer, same year. We did talk to this company because we replaced this transmission not a year and a half ago. And when they came, we thought it would be under warranty. And the reason it's not is because it wasn't the transmission that they replaced that failed. It was the cooler that actually failed. So we did have some discussions with them, you know, can you check, you know, the fluid levels ahead of time? And they said, yes, so we will do that. But they said, the problem is once it leaks a little bit, once you get that antifreeze in there, it's gone. So then we discussed, would it be prudent to, you know, change the radiator in the latter truck just because it's getting older? And, you know, they don't have an answer. He said, listen, you know, that could last for 30 years or it could fail like this one. You know, there's no telling on when it was made. They don't have like a history that, oh, this happens on this model and yeah, you should change it. So we are looking into that, you know, because that would be in the $1,000, you know, a couple thousand, three, I don't know, as opposed to 19 and change. So that we're looking into. But as far as the trucks, they are in good shape. We've done quite a bit, you know, thanks to you, thanks to you. So I don't anticipate anything, but you never know.
I'm not going to hold you to that, I just...
Yeah, no, you know.
You answered exactly what I was curious about, which is...
Right.
Thinking critically about the rest of the fleet. And you asked them the question already about the other trucks. So I think that, you know, we're doing everything we can.
So I hope that we have no other major repairs. There are things we have to do, you know, preventive maintenance-wise. There are tires we have to buy and things like that. So Paul and I hope if I have to from other accounts and putting off until next budget, things like tires, you know, the tires cost $800, you know, each in that range. You don't buy one, right? You're going to buy at least two, maybe four. So those things I will hopefully, you know, we'll look to get in next budget rather than buy them, you know, at the end of this fiscal year. We'd have to do it in next.
Okay.
So that's my hope to manage it.
Thank you.
Counselor Sheffield?
What year is this vehicle, this truck?
2009.
2009?
Yeah.
Okay, how long do you think you'll, you know, before you might need a complete new vehicle? You think since it's now 15 years?
Yeah, well, this is our frontline engine, which is, you know, should last till at least, you know, 2029, something like that. I think we've talked in the past, we have. And we refurbished our other engine, so they will come due about the same time. But the latter truck, usually you can get a little longer out of it, hopefully because it runs less. But that's a lifespan of a fire truck in our area.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Counselor Norris?
So Chief, do you remember what the original estimate was for the repair?
It was, I don't know exactly, it was $18,000 and change. What I can tell you changed was the labor cost, which again was, if you read the description, they had to do some custom fitting to make the radiator fit. And so that actually, you know, cost, that's where the cost rise was. But it was, you know, $700, I think.
Got it.
You know, over the estimate.
So if you could tell me, so this truck account, is that the name, the way you phrase that? So you have money, like, what is that for?
That truck maintenance, so it would include obviously fixing our whole fleet. So that's not just the trucks. That would be the vehicles we have, my car, the deputy chief's car, everything from oil changes, right? Which in a car is cheap, but when you do a preventative maintenance on the trucks, you're looking at, you know, $1,500, you know, to, you got to change the oil, which, you know, is very expensive because it's a lot. So all those things are included, along with tires. And then pump testing has to be done annually. Ladder testing has to be done annually. So all those things come out of the truck account.
Right, so is that truck account also for planned maintenance? Or is this truck account just for?
Yes, it is for planned maintenance also. It does take into account preventative maintenance type things. Like I mentioned, we undercode them, we try and undercode them.
Sure.
You know, it's $350, I think.
Right.
You know, because of the salt and where we live.
Right.
The salt air.
So within your budget, is there only one line that addresses repair and maintenance to your fleet?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, that's the, the truck maintenance account, you know, covers all those different aspects.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Piazza?
So you were saying the warranty on the vehicle, that when you checked back, it was a year warranty, correct? Am I correct when you said that?
No, it would have been covered under warranty, but it wasn't due to faulty, you know, labor.
Oh, what did I say?
Or a faulty transmission. It burned out because the antifreeze leaked in. So that, that part obviously isn't covered in the warranty. They didn't touch the cooler.
So how long is the warranty present right now on this vehicle? How long does this warranty last presently on this vehicle?
The transmission will have the warranty.
Okay.
The radiator part is, again, an outside part that Allison doesn't warranty, so...
So there's no warranty on their work per se? Like even 30 days, 60 days?
Oh, yeah, yes, a year on their work, absolutely, yep. And the transmission is two or three.
Well, do you know what the mileage is on this vehicle?
I don't, not off the top of my head.
You know approximately the mileage, annual mileage for the vehicles are?
I don't. And although mileage matters, you know, hours, engine hours are really... Because when we pump, when the truck is pumping water, it's actually using the transmission also, right? So it's really engine hours that drive, you know...
Right.
The engine and the transmission and all those parts.
Right, so when this was done per se, this work, I guess I'm just looking at as far as warranty underneath this. Do they, in their warranty, do they go by engine hours or mileage? Engine hours slash mileage or mileage is not in it at all?
They...
Or engine hours, should I say?
It's usually time, a time thing.
Engine hours?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
No, time of year.
Right, time, yes.
Right, 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 from the time that actually takes, if it was March 3rd to March 2nd of the next year. Right, right, right.
Yes, yes.
Got you, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of February 20th, 2024.
So moved, second?
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Russell, come on up. I apologize for the delay.
We never talked about how long you want me to give, like, an hour is that?
Three hours.
Well, so...
Make a vote.
Do it as little or as much?
All right, I say go ahead and get started and then I will gauge counsel. So this is informing. We have two counselors that a lot of this information is brand new to you. But we do have some counselors that have only been on here one other term and this may be beneficial to you as well. FOIA is something that is very important and FOIA is something that we're dealing with every single day. We've just got two brand new, actually, two brand new FOIA requests today. And so it's, this is why, so my staff has already been briefed. And so we were going to do this earlier, but then scheduling conflicts. So we're able to get Russell here today, so I wanted to bring him in to give FOIA training. Counselor Sheffield?
Is there anything to pass out to us to read?
Okay, David and Mayor Depot?
I just wanted to add to that, because our meetings are recorded. I know that I, we put out the meetings and people can see the topics on the meetings. I know on my communication Facebook page, I put, you know, that we would be having FOIA training. So I also may be asking questions relevant to what residents should know in terms of our obligations when it comes to FOIA. So I also, like, to me, that's an important perspective too, like what the residents should be informed of, what our responsibilities as counselors are under FOIA.
Well, that's a very good point.
I think the mayor's already got these from...
I do. Yes, sir, thank you. So when you get ready to start, if you could introduce yourself and your position and that kind of thing, just not only for the council, but also for the, the people that are watching.
Sure.
This, the committee of the whole. Okay, perfect.
All right, so good evening, everyone. My name is Russell Blair. I'm the Director of Education and Communications at the State Freedom of Information Commission. And really what I do is I come out to, you know, municipalities like this, do these trainings because, you know, especially if you're new to the council, you know, FOI can really seem like a lot, you know. You know, somebody maybe asks you to run for council, you've got all these ideas, all these great things you want to do, and all of a sudden, you're learning about Robert's Rules and Freedom of Information and all these things. And, you know, we don't want it to seem overwhelming. What we hope you take away from tonight is some practical advice, practical tips, you know, how to handle FOI requests, knowing what you need to do for city council meetings, so that you come away with sort of the knowledge and tools.
Is your mic, I'm sorry, is your mic on? I press it to the screen.
Okay, now...
That way we can, yes, we can pick you up on the...
Okay, yeah, so I'll start again then, sorry about that.
Thank you.
So my name is Russell Blair. I'm Director of Education and Communications at the State Freedom of Information Commission. And, you know, the training we're doing tonight, really what we're trying to do is to give you guys all the tools so that you understand what's required under FOIA, sometimes more importantly, what's not required under FOIA. You know, what is a FOI request? What do you have to do for your meetings? When can you go into executive session? You know, there's a lot of nuance to the law and it can be confusing, you know, especially if you're new to a border commission, especially if you're not an attorney. I always like when I do a training session here to say, I am not an attorney either. So, you know, I understand how it can be difficult sometimes when you're in a situation where, you know, you're having to make decisions, you're looking at statutes, you're thinking, oh, my gosh, you know, do I do this? Do I do that? And really, you know, we want to give you some practical advice. So when you're in those situations, you know, you have enough information that you need to make a decision, to know what you need to do, and most importantly, to avoid an FOI complaint. If you don't know how freedom of information works in Connecticut, unlike some other states, we have a commission where I work. And what happens is if somebody believes that their rights under FOIA have been violated, whether that means that they were denied access to a public meeting or they were denied access to public records, they can file a complaint with us. And we get 600 to 700 complaints a year. And when that happens, you know, potentially people involved in the town have to come to a hearing in Hartford. You know, it can be a tremendous amount of time. Your town attorney can get roped in. You know, we do, you know, we're pretty good about trying to settle complaints when they come up through mediation. But really, we want you guys to have the tools and the information that you need so you can do everything that you need to do. You avoid those complaints and you can focus on your council work. And again, FOI doesn't become this big burdensome thing that, you know, you're overly concerned about and worried about, you know, having something go wrong with FOI and getting in the way of your council work. So a couple of things that's important to know about FOI in Connecticut. As I sort of said earlier, it's really about public access to meetings and it's about public access to records. So we'll start first, you know, with the meetings portion of the law. And one important thing to know for meetings, especially if you're on, you know, a city council or a border commission, is FOI, you know, the way it works is it applies to every public agency and that includes subcommittees. So I know tonight, this is the, I think, your committee of the whole. You know, every committee of the council is an entity under FOI. So every committee needs to do agendas, minutes, notice your meetings. You know, all your meetings are open to the public. I just make that point because later on, when we talk about the definition of a meeting, we're going to talk about quorums and we're going to talk about caucuses and all these different things that come up. But the important thing to know is that, you know, if you have subcommittees or if you create a task force, if your council votes to create a task force to look into a certain project, any entity that you create needs to follow FOIA. The way I like to think of it is you can't delegate away your FOI obligation. So if your office is covered by FOIA, if your board or commission is covered by FOIA, if you create a new entity to do some work and report back to the council, that new entity is also covered, covered under FOIA. So when we start with meetings, I want to talk first about one thing that is not required of meetings under FOIA and that sometimes people always ask about this is public comment. It's important to know that when you're on a border commission, what FOI allows is it allows people to attend your meetings, that they are allowed to come, observe, see you guys discuss things, see you guys take actions, see the votes, you know, learn why the council made decisions on a certain topic. How you handle public comment is entirely up to your border commission. You can have public comment at your meetings. I think it's, you know, I think it's a great thing if you have it, if people want to interact with their representatives. But you can set the parameters, you can set time limits, you can set topic limits. You could decide we're only going to do it, you know, every other meeting. Just know that anything you do with public comment, including sometimes this is a thing that comes up, you know, people will speak during public comment, they expect to see their name included in the minutes or they want their remarks all included verbatim. None of that's required. Anything to do with public comment is really up to you. All you cannot do is, you can't deny someone an opportunity to come and sit at the meeting. So FOI grants people the right to sit and observe your meetings. There's no granted, right granted... um, FOI grants people the right to sit and observe your meetings, there's no granted, uh, right granted for participation, so I always just like to make that point, because, you know, sometimes people always ask, and, and, you know, people will file complaints over that, or they'll call me and complain about, um, they weren't allowed to speak at a meeting, but the public's right is to sit here and listen to you guys, do your work and make your decisions. Um, so, um, as I said earlier, you know, definition of a meeting is really important under FOI, 'cause there's a few key things in there that really make a meeting a public meeting. So what the law says is that a meeting, uh, under FOI is any hearing or other proceeding of a, of a public agency, any convening or assembly of a quorum of a multi-member public agency, and any communication by or to a quorum of a multi-member public agency, whether in person or by means of electronic equipment, to discuss or act upon a matter over which the public agency has supervision, control, jurisdiction, or advisory power. Um, so I know that's a mouthful, but there's a few things in there, um, I think are really important to, to pull out. Um, and the first is a quorum. Um, by and large, that is what makes something a meeting under FOI, is when you have a quorum, um, of your, of your board, whether it's your council, whether it's your board of education, whatever, whatever it is, a quorum, you know, your voting majority, half plus one, so if you have a nine-member board, quorum is five, if it's three, it's two, whenever you have a quorum of your board together, and you're, um, discussing or acting upon business that's before that board, um, and then there's that part in there too, whether in person or by means of electronic equipment, so, um, it doesn't matter if it's an email, text messages, um, you know, Facebook chat, anything where your enti- you know, where a quorum of your board is together, and you're talking about board business, under the law, that's considered to be a meeting. Um, I'm gonna spend a little bit of time here talking about email, 'cause that's always a common thing that comes up. When I say that, people say, oh, my gosh, does that mean, um, you know, we can't send emails back and forth? The important thing with email, if you have a quorum of your council on an email, or you have the whole council on an email, is you don't wanna be getting into, you know, deliberative discussions, back and forth conversations, um, certainly not any votes or anything like that over email. You can use email among the whole council for a few kind of things, um, one thing could certainly be, if a counselor wants to add something to the agenda of the meeting, if they have an idea, they have a proposal, a citizen brought something to their attention, you can send that to your fellow counselors and say, hey, you know, somebody stopped me in the supermarket, they brought up this thing, um, can we put it on the agenda for the next meeting and, and talk about it then? And that's the important part, is that you wanna save the discussion, um, you know, for, for that meeting where you're gonna be doing it, you know, doing it in public. Um, I'll give another example, um, you know, you could share a newspaper article, you know, just, hey, I saw this pro- this, uh, article about this program we have in the city, I think this is great, you know, I'm gonna share this as, as an FYI. Um, you know, you could also, um, you know, share a communication that you sent out, you know, I had a constituent ask me about this, this thing, this is what I sent them, I just want you all to know, so we're all on the same page. The thing you don't want is you don't want, you know, you to suggest an agenda item, and then people start weighing in on that agenda item before the meeting. Um, again, you really wanna save the discussion, and you wanna save the action, um, you know, action that the council's gonna take on that issue, save all that for the meeting. Um, you know, so again, because we're talking about a quorum, um, things that you can do that aren't a meeting include, you know, any counselor can email town staff, counselor could email the mayor, a couple counselors can email together if they're not a quorum, um, and, you know, we'll talk later about some exclusions to all this, including caucuses, you know, it's, it's sort of, um, you can have a situation where you have a quorum of your board, if they're all of the same political party, that can be a caucus under FOI, so they're allowed to communicate. Um, but the main thing is, again, when you're in a situation where it's a quorum of the board, um, whether it's email, whether it's text messages, anything like that, um, you really wanna keep it very surface level, um, again, sending things as an FYI, um, suggesting things you wanna talk about at the next meeting, and the key thing is you wanna have your conversation, um, save that for, for the next meeting. I know sometimes, you know, it can seem like, you know, gosh, we could just get this all done very quickly over email, um, but, you know, you have to remember, you know, you're on a public board or commission, you know, we're making decisions, and we need to be doing, doing that work in public. Um, the thing I like to say is, you know, in the private sector, people say, you know, oh, my gosh, this meeting could have been an email, and in FOI world, it's, you know, this email should have been a meeting, so, um, i- if you're ever on one of those email chains, and you start to see things moving into a direction where it's getting into a lot of discussion, um, if you feel comfortable, I always tell people, you can always say, hey, you know, let's pump the brakes a little bit, we have the meeting coming up next week, let's continue the discussion there. Um, 'cause what you don't wanna have happen is you don't want someone to learn, you know, uh, maybe there's an agenda item they're very interested in, they come to the meeting, and at the meeting, it seems evident that there was a discussion before the meeting, they could file an FOI complaint, they could file an FOI and ask you for copies of those emails, um, you know, the emails may be disclosable, um, and they may find out, oh, you know, the council was talking about this, um, ahead of the meeting, so I wasn't able to see the discussion or hear why a decision was made. Um, a couple other sort of ground rules for meetings, um, so again, as we said, you know, it's, uh, FOI is about attendance of meetings, so everyone is allowed to attend the meeting. Um, one thing that comes up sometimes, uh, i- i- you need to be mindful of, if you're ever in a situation where you have a really hot topic, you have a lot of people coming to your meetings, um, and you, the room is at capacity, you wanna be mindful of that, uh, because if someone can't get into the room, even though, you know, the fire marshal says, we can't have anyone else in here, but if you deny someone access to a meeting based on that, they could file a complaint, so just if you're ever in a situation where, you know, you're expecting a large public attendance, you know, consider moving a meeting to a different location or a bigger room or something like that, because even though, you know, lawfully, yes, you should not exceed the fire, you know, code for the, for the room, um, if someone is not allowed access to the meeting, they, they could file a complaint based on that. Um, anyone can photograph, record, or broadcast a public meeting, I always say, I would hope you don't say anything at a council meeting that you wouldn't want someone to record, um, but just know, if you, any board or commission meeting, you know, somebody can sit in the audience and they can record, they don't have to give you a heads up, um, as long as they're not being, uh, being disruptive. Um, so now we'll talk a little bit about, um, the different types of meetings and some of the requirements that go along with that. So, um, the law allows for three different kinds of meetings, a regular meeting, a special meeting, and an emergency meeting. Um, your regular meetings are the meetings that are on your regular meeting schedule, you file that with the city clerk, um, at the end of January, you know, we meet the first Tuesday of every month, we meet the second Wednesday of every month, um, those are your regular meetings. And a special meeting is just any meeting that is not on that regular meeting schedule. The name is a little bit confusing sometimes, you know, especially if you're new to this, you know, people see special meeting, and especially members of the public may think, oh, my gosh, there's something going on, you know, I gotta be there, it's gonna be a big thing. Um, a special meeting is just a meeting, again, not on your regular meeting schedule, so it could be that you're moving it because of a holiday, um, you wanna start the meeting earlier, um, you know, due to the weather, something like that. Um, you need to add meetings sometimes, you know, maybe you only meet every two weeks, but during the budget season, you might need extra meetings, you could add those as special meetings. So a special meeting is just, um, any, any meeting outside of your regular meeting schedule. Um, the one important thing to know, couple differences with a special meeting, other than the, the timing, you can't add any items to the agenda at a special meeting, so earlier tonight, you guys, you know, added the discussion about the fire truck, 'cause it came up, you know, late on Friday, if this was a special meeting tonight, you would not have been able to add that to the agenda, but because it's a regular meeting, by a two-thirds vote, you can add anything to the, to the agenda that you wanna discuss, um, at, at the night of the meeting. So on agendas, um, for regular meetings and special meetings, agendas need to be filed twenty-four hours in advance. For a special meeting, you need to make sure the agenda goes on the website as well. Um, and then, um, for your special meeting, you also need to notice, file twenty-four hours in advance, in most cases, you know, it's gonna be your agenda as well, um, telling people where the meeting is and the business that you're gonna, um, that you're gonna conduct at the meeting. Um, we'll talk more in detail about minutes in a second, but, but regular meeting, file your minutes within seven calendar days. In special meeting, you get a little bit more time, you file them within seven business days. One important thing on minutes is that at the local level, what the law says is they just need to be available, they don't need to necessarily be posted to the website within the seven days, so if they go up on the website late, that's not a violation, but you need to make sure that they're in the clerk's office, so if somebody comes seven days after the meeting, um, the expectation is that the minutes are there, um, and that they are available for, for public inspection. Um, the third type of meeting is what's called an emergency meeting, and, you know, as the name suggests, you know, really only in the event of an emergency. Um, an emergency meeting is a meeting with, uh, no public notice and no agenda, so, you know, this is a case where, um, the council decides, we can't wait twenty-four hours for a special meeting, you know, we need to convene immediately, um, to appropriate money, to take some kind of action, a lot of times, this can come up with, um, you know, weather emergencies, where, you know, you, you can't wait twenty-four hours because it's, you know, a blizzard, or it's flooding, or something like that. Um, we also saw this early on during the pandemic, you know, uh, in COVID, when, you know, the public health orders, things were changing literally, you know, by the hour, and, and there were towns where, um, they had to do emergency meetings to try to digest this information, to make decisions, to close municipal buildings, to put in place new, new health protocols. Um, so if, if something comes up where you can't wait twenty-four hours for, for a special meeting, um, there is a mechanism in the law to do that, and, and it's the emergency meeting. Um, if you do have an emergency meeting, you can only consider the emergency matter that's at hand, it sounds kind of simple, right? But, but, um, you'd be surprised what, what people try to, um, fit into an emergency meeting. Um, and again, if you have an emergency meeting, um, file the minutes within seventy-two hours. So, um, at this point, I like to talk a little bit, um, about sort of, there's a story about emergency meetings, it also dovetails with powers of the commission, 'cause I think you're probably all wondering, okay, well, we're talking about all what we need to do, what happens if, if there's an error, you know, what happens if a complaint gets filed against us? So, um, you know, the commission is not really punitive, a lot of times, if there's a complaint that gets filed, um, you know, as I sort of said earlier, you know, we, we try to resolve these things through mediation, we have an ombudsman who gets assigned, and we try to resolve the complaints that way. Um, sometimes we can order training as part of it, you know, to resolve a complaint, you know, we can order a, a mandatory FOI training. But what's interesting with meetings is, and this is the strongest thing the commission can do with meetings, is we can declare null and void any votes taken at a meeting, um, that was noticed improperly, um, or if there was some other issue. Um, so again, you know, if the agenda wasn't filed, um, or, you know, people weren't allowed access to the meeting, something like that happens, um, and the commission believes, you know, this was a serious violation, they can come in and they can say, those votes that were taken, um, are, are null and void. So, um, this is a story, uh, about ten or fifteen years ago, and sort of shows, you know, the, the worst case that can happen, um, you know, when, when something like that comes up with a meeting. So this was a town where they were searching for a new fire chief, and they, um, had decided initially that they were gonna go with the deputy fire chief, they were gonna give the deputy fire chief the job and promote him to be the fire chief. So the deputy fire chief had already started telling colleagues and friends and family, he was very excited, um, that he was gonna get this promotion. Um, but it turns out that the first selectman in this town had not really consulted with everybody else, and eventually had decided they wanted to go into a different direction, they wanted to do a broader search, and they said, well, we can make deputy fire chief the interim chief while, um, while we search for the new one. So the first selectman goes in and tells the deputy fire chief this, and as you can probably imagine, the deputy fire chief is not too happy, um, you know, thought he was getting his promotion, and, and now all of a sudden, he's not. Um, but it turned into, you know, a pretty ugly shouting match, and yelling, and screaming, and, and, um, he stormed out of the first selectman's office, and meanwhile, other people in town hall heard this commotion going on, and they went to the first selectman, and they told him, uh, you gotta do something about this, right, this is your employee, he's being insubordinate. Um, so to make a long story short, the first selectman decides, we're gonna have an emergency meeting to deal with this. Instead of scheduling a special meeting, instead of waiting till the next board or selectman meeting, they could have put the guy on a paid, you know, administrative leave or suspension, and, you know, based on what he did, um, but they decided to call an emergency meeting, and they called the emergency meeting for the next day. Um, so the, the clerk for the board called the selectman that night, said we're having an emergency meeting the next day. Um, they had the emergency meeting, they go and they collect the, um, deputy fire chief and tell him, hey, if there's an emergency meeting, we're talking about what happened, he comes to the emergency meeting, and, um, more yelling, more shouting, they really don't settle much of anything. Um, he says that he wants to resign, the board says that we're gonna fire you, um, he leaves the meeting, in any event, he's no longer working for the fire department. Uh, but I don't know if he got an attorney, or if he had attended an FOI training like this, but, um, someone must have told him to file a complaint, 'cause again, the emergency was this personnel issue, um, and, and they deemed it, you know, so important, they had to have an emergency meeting. So he filed a complaint with our commission, and the commission said, no, you know, that personnel issue was not an emergency, um, and as I said earlier, they declared null and void what had happened, so whether he was fired, resigned, whatever happened at the meeting, it didn't happen. Um, if you're ever on the losing end of an FOI decision, you can appeal to court. Um, if you think our attorneys got it wrong, you could basically sue us and, and go to Superior Court, and that's what the town in this case did. Um, so they sued in court, they lost in Superior Court, they went all the way to the Supreme Court over the span of about three years, challenging this decision about firing the firefighter, um, they lost at the Supreme Court. And, and the Supreme Court upheld that decision, declaring that vote null and void. So if you think about that, um, if you know anything about how the courts work, imagine you're in a situation now where you have somebody who was taken off the payroll, about three years have elapsed, and you have a court come in at the end and say, actually, that person should have been on the payroll the whole time. So, the next thing the town had to do after they lost at the Supreme Court was negotiate a settlement with the guy, so he wouldn't sue them for all the back pay that he was owed. Um, so I know it's a little bit of a long story, but I just share that, again, not that it's ever gonna happen again, not that, you know, you're gonna make some big decision, and FOI's gonna come in and reverse it, but just know, you know, that's sort of the, that's the most extreme case of what could happen, so, um, I, you know, I, I say that to, to make a point that if you're in a situation where you notice that there's been an issue, the agenda wasn't posted, you know, the agenda wasn't filed on time, um, you know, th- there's business that you wanna add at a special meeting, and you're saying, well, you know, what could happen if we just do it, and no one, you know, who's gonna know, who's gonna notice? Um, y- you wanna be mindful of that, because if someone files a complaint and comes in, you know, and, and, and there's a, you know, egregious violation, that's the potential, you know, the remedy that could, that could happen, is the commission could come in, um, and, and undo the work that has done. And, um, you know, again, I know it can be frustrating, um, but just imagine, you know, you've spent all these hours with public hearings on your budget, and, you know, the agenda was wrong for the final vote, and you just say, well, we're just gonna press ahead, and then something like this happens. So, again, I don't say that because it's gonna happen to you, but I just share it as kind of a worst case, um, and, and why it's important to be, you know, paying attention to agendas and, and things like that. So the next thing on meetings we'll talk a little bit about is electronic and remote meetings. Um, what's important to know is the law allows, uh, the, the law allows you to have electronic and remote meetings, it's not a requirement. Um, so if boards wanna go back to meeting in person, um, that's, that's totally okay. Um, however, and this, some of this is on the little handout there with the meetings, um, if you do wanna have an electronic meeting, there's, there's some additional requirements, um, that you have to abide by in the law. So earlier, I talked about, you know, twenty-four hours, you know, agendas are twenty-four hours, special meeting notices, twenty-four hours. If you have a regular meeting, and you're gonna have an electronic component, uh, the law requires you to post, um, you know, it says the instructions on how to attend, which is basically the link, so if it's a Zoom meeting, it's a Zoom link, um, post those links forty-eight hours, um, in advance. And I think, from what I remember here, I think you guys do a pretty good job, I think you post almost the whole week of meetings, um, you know, ahead of time. So, um, if you have, uh, an electronic meeting coming up, just again, make sure that the Zoom link gets out there forty-eight hours ahead of time. Um, and then the other thing to be aware of is if, if you have an online-only meeting, so if you have not a hybrid like today, where we have, you know, people can watch online or be in person, if you have a meeting where it's entirely online, the whole council is online, and it's a regular meeting, in addition to doing minutes, uh, you need to record that meeting and post a recording on your website within seven days, um, and then that recording needs to be on your website for at least forty-five days. Um, so again, recording, if it's an online-only meeting, if everyone's on the screen, you do a recording, you still do the minutes. One important thing to know with online meetings is, you know, it's the same rules that apply with disruptive behavior, um, that apply to in-person meetings. So if somebody, um, you know, we saw early on in the pandemic, a lot of Zoom bombing, um, we don't see it as much anymore, at least I had, had hoped we wouldn't, but I've actually gotten calls in the last week from some towns where they're starting to see, um, you know, people coming in from out of state and interrupting during public comment, or taking over the screen, and displaying all kinds of, um, you know, racist things or anti-Semitic things. Just know, if, if something like that happens in an online meeting, um, you can kick someone out, you can shut them down, you know, they're not there to participate in the meeting, they're there causing a disruption in the same way, you know, if somebody was standing in this room and screaming and shouting, and, and, and wouldn't let you guys do your work, um, you know, you have a right to run an orderly meeting, whether it's online, um, or in person. Um, or if somebody, you know, leaves their microphone open, and the radio's blaring, and you guys can't hear each other, you can mute somebody, you can kick them out, anything you need to do, um, to maintain order in, in an electronic meeting, um, you know, it's the same idea as an in-person meeting. Um, so the next thing we wanna cover with meetings, um, and, and once we go through meetings, I'll, I'll take questions, 'cause I'm sure you're probably, this is all kind of coming, coming at you fast and furious, but there's a, a few just other points on meetings, um, to finish up on. So executive session, um, what I think is important to know about executive session is, the law is very specific about what you can go into an executive session for. Executive session is not meant to be, um, you know, to discuss things that make us feel uncomfortable, or, you know, we wanna have a private discussion before the public discussion. That's not what executive session is for. Um, executive session by law, it's limited to, to these five specific topics, and I'll go over those in a second, but I, I also just wanna talk about kind of the mechanics for an executive session. So, um, if you wanna have an executive session, um, even if it's the only thing that you're gonna take up at that meeting, you still do a meeting notice, you still do a meeting agenda, you still do meeting minutes, um, you don't need to include what happened in the executive session in the minutes, but you still need to file minutes. Um, you do have to include who attended the executive session in the minutes. Um, you need a two-thirds vote to go into executive session, you can't vote during executive session, um, executive session is just for discussion, so if you wanna take any action based on the discussion in executive session, the votes have to be cast in public. Who can be invited into an executive session? Uh, the council can bring in whoever you want for the executive session, but the key thing is the people that you're bringing in um, need to be there for, that they're participating in some way. Um, you know, if you're talking about a legal matter, you may want your city attorney there, and you're asking them questions, or they're giving you legal advice, or if it's a personnel matter, you may want, um, you know, the department head to, to be in the executive session to talk about, um, that personnel matter. What you don't wanna do is just start inviting a bunch of other people and creating what we call a second audience, because then you're letting, um, other people, you know, they, they're getting the privilege to attend the executive session, maybe over a member of the public who wanted to attend. Um, and one last sort of mechanical thing with executive sessions, um, don't adjourn from an executive session, you know, even if everyone has gone home, and there's no one here, um, the proper thing to do is, you know, come out of executive session, you know, you could just say, look, we didn't, you know, there's no votes, we're not taking any votes tonight, um, but, but make sure you adjourn the meeting. And the same thing goes for electronic meetings, if there's an electronic executive session, um, you make sure you come back and, uh, you, you adjourn the meeting. But the reasons for an executive session, so we'll go through, um, go through the five, and, um, a little bit of detail on each one. So the first one, as I mentioned earlier- So the first one, as I mentioned earlier, personnel matters. And I've seen some towns where they try to get creative with that, you know, personnel, they start talking about budgets, or they start talking about staffing, or police uniforms. Personnel means you're talking about, you know, a, a city employee, you're, you're talking about hiring somebody, you're talking about firing somebody, you're talking about, you know, the evaluation of a, of a, a public employee, the health of a public employee, anything to do with, you know, that, that person's employment with the city. And important thing to know with personnel matters, executive sessions, is that if you are going to talk about an employee in executive session, you have to notify them, and they have the right to have that discussion held in an open session. They don't have the right to go into the executive session with you necessarily. A lot of times, you are gonna bring that person in, if you're evaluating your police chief, for example, you probably want to hear from, hear from him about, you know, what he's doing. Or if you're gonna discipline an employee, you probably want to hear from them about, you know, what, what transpired. But the right of public employees under FOI is to have that discussion in an open session. So if a public employee feels like, I don't feel comfortable going into executive session, I want, you know, my friends to be able to listen, I want the newspaper to be able to hear what's going on, they can request an open session. And if they request an open session, you have to grant that request, it's not at your discretion if they say, I want it out in the open, you have the discussion out in the open. The, the next reason for an executive session is to discuss any pending claims or litigation. You know, this could be a lawsuit filed, this could be an FOI complaint filed, it could also be the, the council or the board considering taking legal action. You know, maybe there was a state regulatory decision that came down that you guys disagree with, and you want to consider appealing it in court or something like that. The key thing with that is that it's meant to be something that is, you know, already been filed or imminent. If you receive a demand letter, you know, somebody sends an email to the council and says, unless you, you know, do this, this, or this, I'm gonna sue you, you know, that would also be something you could discuss in an executive session. But it's not meant to be, you know, again, a free-ranging discussion about things that, oh, well, you know, this could get us sued, or this is a thorny issue. You know, sometimes people try to fit that in under pending claims or litigation, but that's really only meant for when there's actually been either a lawsuit filed, or there's some kind of imminent legal action incoming. The next reason for an executive session is to discuss a security matter, if you feel that having a public discussion would undermine that, that issue. Let's say that, you know, you're talking about purchasing a new security system for this building, and you want to get into a detailed discussion about, you know, where you're gonna put cameras, or what types of, you know, bulletproof glass you're gonna install, or panic buttons, or things like that, you could have that discussion in an executive session so that somebody can't listen in and hear, you know, about all the intricacies of the security system, potentially, you know, use that information to, you know, for, for a nefarious purpose. You know, again, if you were gonna talk about appropriating money for the system, you would need to do that in public, but you wouldn't necessarily have to talk about in public about all the ins and outs of, of the system, or where things are gonna be installed, or, or anything like that. You can also have an executive session to discuss the sale or lease of property, if you feel that a public discussion would impact the price point. You know, maybe the town is looking for, you know, a piece of land to build new athletic fields. You may internally have a budget of, you know, you could spend up to half a million dollars on a piece of land, maybe you find one that's listed for $200,000. You may want to talk about that, just, you know, in an executive session, because if you come out publicly and say, well, we can go up to $500,000, person who owns that land is probably gonna want the $500,000 that they know that the city can afford to spend. So if it's priced about a sale or lease of, of property, you can do that in an executive session. And the last reason for executive session, which is the broadest, is you can discuss any records that are exempt from FOIA in an executive session. We'll talk more in detail about the exemptions later, but a lot of things, you know, some examples that come up frequently, attorney-client privilege. So if you're getting legal advice from your city attorney, and they send you a memo, and it's protected by attorney-client privilege, that wouldn't be, you could go into an executive session to discuss that. You can also go into executive session to discuss bids before you award a contract. There's an exemption in the law that says, until a contract is awarded, or until you end negotiations, those bids that you receive back, any board or commission can review those, you can discuss the prices, what you liked, what you didn't like. You could do that in an executive session until you, until you pick the bidder and award the contract. Once the contract is awarded, the bids are all public, and, and people would have a right to get copies of them. Before that point, you could, you could discuss that in, in an executive session. So, next thing on meetings is, you know, earlier we talked about, you know, definition of a meeting, quorum is really being the key thing. But then there's a couple instances where you can have a quorum of your board together, but it's not considered to be a meeting under FOI. The first one is, you know, I alluded to it earlier, is a caucus. So this provision was really put in the law for the legislature, you know, up in Hartford, they're caucusing all the time. You know, if you've ever been up there waiting for, you know, a meeting or anything like that, a lot of times you're just sitting there and you're stuck twiddling your thumbs, because they're in caucus, they're in caucus. But at the local level, you can also have a caucus. The important thing to know is that even if it's a quorum of your board, so if you have a situation where, you know, let's say you have a nine-member board, and you have seven Democrats and two Republicans, those seven Democrats are a quorum of the board, but they can get together in a caucus and talk about whatever they want to talk about, and it's not considered to be a meeting, again, because they're of the same board and the same political party. The important thing with a caucus, unlike an executive session, is it really should be limited to those, you know, council members. The caucus is for the council, it's not an opportunity for the council to start bringing in, you know, your Democratic town chairman, or bringing in, you know, department heads, or town attorneys, or anything like that. The caucus is really, it's for the, the members of the board, you know, again, to discuss strategy, or getting on the same page, you know, ahead of a vote in a meeting, or something like that. One important thing to know with caucuses, people sometimes ask about, you know, can we have an electronic caucus, can we have an email caucus, or a text caucus? And the answer is, yes, you can. You know, you're not in violation of, of the, the meetings rule, if it's all same, same board and same political party. But the important thing to know about caucuses, and this goes for executive sessions too, is that if you create any records of a caucus, or of an executive session, those records are not gonna necessarily be exempt from FOIA. The caucus exemption allows you to meet and discuss things in what would otherwise need to be a situation where you would have to have a public meeting. It says nothing about the records that you create from that caucus being exempt from disclosure. So, you know, if all the Democrats want to email ahead of the council meeting, they can do that, but they just need to be mindful that if someone made a FOIA request for those emails, they would not, you know, there's not a caucus exemption. Potentially, there could be some exemptions, you know, based on the content of the emails. But, but if, you know, if they don't fit into an exemption, then whatever strategy or things they were discussing ahead of the meeting that they thought maybe, oh, it's a private conversation among us, it's a caucus, if you put it into an email, you know, it's a public record that someone could, could request. And the same thing goes with executive session, you know, executive session gives boards the privilege to discuss certain things, you know, outside of public view. But if you create records in an executive session, they're not necessarily gonna be exempt from disclosure. So if you, you know, there is an exemption for personal notes, so if you're taking some notes on your agenda, or you're writing things down during an executive session, you know, those could be exempt. But if you go back to your computer at night, and you write up a whole email and send it to all your other councilor members about what happened in the executive session, or if you take very detailed minutes of an executive session, something like that, you know, those records could be something that you have to disclose. So executive sessions and caucuses allows you to, you know, meet and discuss things outside of public view, but the records you create, if any, from those, are, are not necessarily gonna also be exempt. The other things that are, where you have a quorum together, but it's not considered to be a meeting under FOI, any board or commission can create a personnel search committee for an executive-level employee. So, you know, if you had a board of police commissioners, they can create a search committee to look for the next police chief. The search committee can include members of that board, it could include members of the public, whoever they want on it, it could include the whole board if they wanted. But if it's a search committee, they don't have to operate under FOI, so they can interview candidates, they can review resumes, they could meet with a search consultant, they could do all that outside of public meetings. The idea being, eventually they're gonna make a recommendation, it's gonna come back to the council or the board for some kind of action. Anything to do with collective bargaining, strategy and negotiations related to collective bargaining is exempt from meetings, requirements of FOIA. So if the mayor wants to give an update on where things stand with union contracts, or the union wants to meet with the council and talk about things, if it's related to collective bargaining, you could do that outside of a meeting. And the last one is what's called a CHANCE or social meeting. And this is where it's a situation where you have a quorum of your council together, but you're not in a situation where you're discussing board business. You're at a town event, you're at a holiday party, you know, anything like that. You're going out to dinner after the meeting, whatever it may be. The key thing with that is that when you're in those situations, you're together, but you really shouldn't be talking about board business. The, the important thing to avoid is what I call the parking lot meeting, and I ran into this a lot, because I was a journalist before, I, I did this, and, you know, the meeting ends, and inevitably you see all the counselors are standing out in the parking lot, and they're all chit-chatting, and it, look, if you're blowing off steam, you're talking about, oh my God, I can't believe it, we were here till 10 o'clock, or this person at public comment, he wouldn't shut up about whatever it is. You know, you, you guys spend a lot of time together, you may want to go vent a little bit after the meeting, but what you don't want to do is, you don't want to be standing out there in the parking lot and continuing the discussion of the things that were there at the meeting, especially if something gets pushed to another, another date. You know, imagine the situation where it's a planning and zoning commission, and it's a contested application, and they go on and on, and there's all this public testimony, and they say, okay, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna hold off on making a vote, and we're gonna push it to the next meeting. And then the developer's walking out, and he sees the planning and zoning commission standing in the parking lot, and he doesn't have to know what they're talking about, he could file a complaint and say, look, for all I know, they were talking about how they're gonna vote down my project at the next meeting. So you want to be careful, you know, again, you spend a lot of time together, you may be friendly, you may have relationships outside of the council, that's fine. But you just want to avoid talking about city business when you're in those situations. And, and if it does come up, you know, try to steer the conversation in a different direction. You know, you don't want to be having discussions and, and making decisions outside of public meetings. So the last thing with meetings we'll talk about is minutes. The important thing with minutes, you know, one, one takeaway I always try to impart on people is that the level of detail in the minutes is, is really up to you and the person taking the min, you know, it's up to the board and the person taking the minutes. The only thing that's required by FOIA is a recording of the votes, who voted for what or for whom, who was in attendance at the meeting, and then if you have an executive session, you want to make sure you include who was in attendance in the executive session. The level of detail you go into on all the other topics, again, it's entirely up to you. If you have public comment, you don't need to put every single person who spoke in public comment and list their name and their address and what they said. If you want to do it, you can, but you, you know, you're not required to do that. People don't have a right to attach anything to the minutes. Sometimes you see that, you know, people will, will come up to you after the meeting, and they'll hand you documents over the counter and say, look, I want you to put this in the minutes, or attach this to the minutes. Again, content of the minutes is, is really up to the person taking the minutes. I do the minutes for our commission meetings up in Hartford, and we keep them pretty brief, because we have recordings of the, of the, the meeting. So we always tell people, you know, the minutes are gonna be brief, if they want to go view a recording, they can go view a recording. I understand you're recording meetings too, so that's a great thing, you know, you, you can always point people to the recording of the meeting. The minutes are not meant to be a, a, you know, verbatim transcript of what happened. You know, you want to catch the flavor, you want to, you know, record the votes, but the most important thing, you know, as I said earlier, minutes need to be filed within seven days. That's the thing that the FOI commission is gonna look at. You know, that's the thing somebody could file a complaint over. Nobody can file a complaint with us over the content of your minutes. You know, oh, there wasn't enough detail, they didn't put my name in the minutes, anything like that. But if you don't have them available within seven days, that's the important thing. So you don't want to write your 15-page minutes if they come in, you know, two weeks late. So I know that was a lot on meetings, so I want to make sure, you know, we answer any questions anyone has about minutes, executive sessions, agendas,[1363.13] any questions anyone has about minutes, executive sessions, agendas, electronic meetings, um, a- a- anything at all.
Okay, questions on meetings? Counselor Piazza?
Thank you. Um, you had stated if somebody comes into a meeting that they could actually, um, record it. Um, do each of these meetings, regular, special, emergency, do they, must they be recorded for public access?
Um, the only require- so, the only recording that you have to do under the, under FOIA is, um, so, an online-only meeting, so, a regular meeting of your board and it's entirely on Zoom. So, if it's a hybrid meeting, you don't have to record it. If it's an in-person meeting, you don't have to record it. Um, the only requirement under FOIA is, is if it's an online-only meeting.
Any other questions or comments on meetings? Okay.
Um, yeah, I mean, the most important thing with meetings, again, is, um, you know, it's about access, um, make sure your agendas get in on time, make sure the minutes get in on time. Um, the meeting stuff is, is, you know, it's pretty black and white, um, but where, you know, where, where there's more complaints and where there's more discussion is, a, a lot of times is over the records, the records portion of the law. Um, so, um, I'm just gonna read a little bit from the definition of public records in, in FOI. Um, I think it's important to know because it's really very broad. So, um, what's a public record under FOIA is, "Any recorded data or information relating to the conduct of the public's business, prepared, owned, used, received, or retained by a public agency, or to which a public agency is entitled to receive a copy by law or contract, whether such data or information be handwritten, typed, taped, recorded, videotaped, printed, photostatted, photographed, or recorded by any other method. An accept is otherwise provided by any federal law or state statute. All records maintained or kept on file by any public agency, whether or not such records are required by any law or by any rule or regulation, shall be public records and every person shall have the right to inspect public records promptly during regular office or business hours and copy such records." Um, the one important thing I, I, I think is, you know, good for boards to know about, about public records is, um, the device the records exist on does not matter, it's the content of the record. So, if you're sending emails from your personal email about council business, that's not a violation, that's okay. I mean, especially in smaller towns, happens all the time because the city's not gonna go and make, you know, create email addresses necessarily for every single person on every board or commission. And they're certainly not gonna give you all cell phones, you know, through, from, from the city. So, you're gonna be using, you know, personal cell phones, you may be using personal email addresses, um, so, again, it doesn't mean that, you know, you can't use those, but the important thing to know is that if you create records on a personal email or a personal cellphone and they're related to council business, they're public records that somebody could request. Somebody could request, I wanna see, um, the text messages between this counselor and this counselor, I wanna see the text messages between the counselor and the mayor, I want text messages between the counselor and the public works director. Um, if it pertains to city business, um, they're public records. Now, obviously, if, you know, you and another counselor and your kids are on the same soccer team and you're texting about that, you know, those are not, um, things that would, that would need to be disclosed, but any other records that pertain to public business, if someone were to file a FOIA, what's important to know is, you know, the commission doesn't come look through your cellphone, the requester doesn't get to come look through your cellphone, um, but you would need to search and find, um, you know, any, any, any messages or, or emails or texts or anything like that, um, that were, that were related to city business and regardless of whether they were on a city device or a personal device, same thing goes for, um, you know, personal laptops, um, you know, I see you're there taking notes, you know, if you're, if you're using your personal computer, that's fine, um, but if you create records related to council business, um, they could be something that somebody could request. Um, so, a little bit about FOI requests and, and what goes into them. Uh, what's important to know is that there's no special form, uh, or language that anyone needs to use to file an FOI request. If someone sends you an email and says, I want a copy of, you know, these records, I want a copy of your emails, um, I want a copy of, you know, the report that the council got on this topic, um, that's the, that's their, their FOIA request. They don't have to cite the statute, they don't have to use a specific form. Anytime somebody sends you an email asking for public records, um, that's, that's an FOI request. Um, number one important thing to know with FOI requests, if you receive a records request, the law says that you have to acknowledge the records request within four business days. Um, failure to acknowledge the records request is considered a denial of the request under the law. Um, a while ago, I was sort of thinking about that in the four-day period and, you know, why do we have that in there? And if you think back, um, I, I didn't say this earlier, but FOIA in Connecticut goes back to 1975. So, this is one of those pieces that's kinda left over from when the law was first put in because if you imagine at the time, people were putting their FOIA requests by mail. So, they said, how am I gonna know if the person actually got my request? So, there's this piece in there that says you have to, uh, acknowledge the records request. So, you don't have to give the person any records, um, you don't have to give them a timeline, you don't have to give them any detail at all. I mean, you may wanna deny the request, but you don't have to tell them that at that point, but if you don't respond and acknowledge the records request within four business days, again, it's considered a denial under the law. So, if you get an FOI request, number one thing you wanna do is make sure you get that acknowledgement out, um, even if you're not really sure on how you're gonna respond to it yet, um, you don't wanna miss that because even if you're starting to search for the records, even if you're doing everything right, if you don't, um, send that acknowledgement, the person can file a complaint after four days and there are people out there who will do that. They'll send you the records request, they'll let the four days go, they don't hear from you, um, they won't even give you a second chance, they'll just send us a complaint. Um, and because the way the statute's written, you know, their request was considered denied, um, under the law. Um, so, what's important to know, you know, I, I sort of alluded to this earlier, is, you know, what's not an FOI request, right? Um, I imagine, because you guys are on the council, y- you're getting emails all the time from people about all, all types of things. Um, but an FOI request needs to be, needs to be a request for specific records. Somebody needs to clearly identify, I want copies of these emails, I want a copy of this report. Um, public agencies are not required to do research or create records that don't already exist under FOIA. So, if somebody asks you for a record and you don't have it, you could tell them, I don't have that record. Um, if they ask you for a list, a certain list, you know, can I get a list of all the, um, you know, all the, the expenditures that the council approved last month? If you don't have a list of that, you can tell them, I don't have the list. You know, you could refer them to the minutes or you could refer them to, you know, individual different documents that have that information. Um, the way to think of it is, you know, people have a right to public records, but you don't have to do their homework for them. So, if they wanna compile them in some way, if they want them formatted in a certain way, sometimes people will, you know, say, I want it in, you know, I want this in a certain format, I want it in an Excel with this column and this column and this column. Unless that's how you have the record, you don't have to do that manipulation, you don't have to make those changes, you don't have to format it, um, in, in a certain way. Um, the thing to remember with FOI, it's search, not research, so you have to search for the records, um, but you're not required to do any kind of research, um, you know, make any interpretation of the records. Um, sometimes people are surprised by this one, there's, there's no obligation to answer questions under FOI, um, you know, I would imagine, because you're on the council, if somebody sends you questions, you're gonna try to get them the answers. Um, but again, you know, an FOI request needs to be for specific records. So, you know, why did the council do this? Who decided that? How did this happen? You know, those kinda things, uh, you know, uh, are, are not FOI requests. You know, why was the fire truck on my street is not an FOI request. I want the copy of the, you know, incident report from, you know, 27 Main Street, you know, that's, that's an FOI request. Um, if someone makes an FOI request, um, a couple things to know, uh, for digital records, there are no fees associated with digital records. So, if somebody wants copies of emails or they want, you know, copies of PDFs or pictures or something like that, um, and, and you can deliver it to them electronically, uh, there's no charge for that. Uh, in the event that there are paper records that they're requesting, I, I know the universal paper records is sort of shrinking every, every single day, um, but if it involves paper records, municipalities can charge, uh, up to 50 cents a page. Um, you are allowed to charge for storage mediums, you know, if you need a USB drive or if you need a DVD or something to, to process a digital request, uh, you can charge for that. Um, but again, you're never charging for your time, you're not charging for the searching, you're not charging for time it takes to redact things, um, you're charging for either, you know, physical media, the paper, um, or, or some kind of electronic media like a USB drive. Uh, so, we talked about how you have four days to acknowledge a records request. Um, number one question I get all the time, how long do we have to give the person the records? You know, somebody asked me for, you know, two years' worth of emails, when do I have to get it to them? So, um, it's a little difficult because the law does not have a specific timeframe. The thing you always wanna be thinking about is that you need to get the person the records promptly. And there's an advisory opinion from a number of years ago, uh, that our commission still uses and these are the factors we take into consideration. So, it's important to know because if someone files a complaint with us and says, you weren't being prompted fulfilling your FOI request, this is what we would look at, so these are the kinda things you should consider too. Uh, the volume of records requested, so if somebody makes a large request, obviously it's gonna take longer. Um, the amount of personnel time necessary to comply with the request, you know, how complex is it? Is it just you searching through an email, um, you know, your email inbox, or is it requiring you to go and gather records in physical locations in different offices? Um, other time constraints that the agency is under, so if somebody makes, you know, an FOI request for you for, you know, years' worth of emails and you're in the middle of your budget season, there may be less time to do FOI work at, at that point, um, and that's understood. Uh, but the important thing is that FOI is a primary duty of public agencies, that's what the courts have said. So, really what it's about is trying to balance FOI requests with all the other work that you have to do. And I don't say that lightly because I know it's not easy, um, you know, especially, um, you know, for people on boards and commissions because you're volunteers, you know, in most cases, right? You know, you're, you're here, you wanna do things for the city, you're trying to move things forward and make things better for the city, um, and it's a lot of work and then you get an FOI request on top of it and you're thinking, oh, my gosh, how am I gonna handle all this? Uh, but again, the key thing is really balance. Um, couple of tips I will give is, if somebody, uh, there's no limit on how mu- how many public records somebody can request. So, somebody, you know, if you've been on the council for six years, somebody could ask for every email you've sent since you got elected. What you can do though, is you can try to get the person to narrow their request and the one thing that you have as an advantage is, most people want the information quickly. If you tell the person, look, if you want all six years' worth of emails, it's gonna take me a significant amount of time. Is there a certain topic that you're interested in? Can you give me a keyword that I can search for? Are you looking for emails, you know, uh, between me and a certain person? Uh, you know, what happens a lot of times is, people have an idea about, they wanna find out more about something, but they don't know where the information is, so they'll make these big giant FOI requests that encompass everything because they say, well, I know somewhere in there I'm gonna find my answer. But if you ever get a big FOI request like that, you can ask the person to narrow it, you could also ask the person, um, you know, what are they really trying to find out? Okay, you want all my emails between me and the public works director, is there a particular project you're interested in? Um, you know, just 'cause someone sends an FOI request, sometimes we see it as sort of an adversarial thing, you know, we get our backup, why does this person want the public records, you know, what are they after, what are they gonna do with it? Um, you know, the law doesn't distinguish someone's motive for requesting public records and I would really encourage you to try not to do that either, it can be hard sometimes. You know, you may be concerned, oh, my gosh, someone's gonna use this for political purposes or this person's been giving me a hard time and now they're making an FOI request. Um, you know, look at, really look at the public records request that they sent in, you know, are they public records? And if so, the person is entitled to them. Um, but, but also, don't view FOI requests as adversarial in nature. Try to find out what the person is, is, if you can, find out what the person is after and maybe you find a si- situation where, you know, they only really need a smaller amount of records and it saves you time, gets them the information that they're looking for much quicker. Um, but really, again, it's a balance and if you get a big FOI request, you can always spend a little time each week, you can always give people a little bit, you know, a few records at a time, you know, here's, here are 50 emails, I'm gonna go through and find any other ones that I may have. Um, I find that if the requesters feel like they're having a dialogue with the person, they're less likely to file a complaint. Um, if you give them a little, you know, if you can give them some of the low-hanging fruit, if they ask for, you know, 10 different types of records and some are easier to provide, you can do that. Um, you know, again, try to show them in good faith, look, I'm trying to work with you. Um, you know, it's a two-way street, um, you know, you wanna try to be in communication with the requester, um, you know, a- a- as much as you can. You're never gonna, you know, prevent a complaint from being filed entirely, uh, but I think a dialogue is important, um, and, and it's important to not get too fixated on who the Requester is and why they want the information because if you start going down that road and, and you lose track of, you know, actually fulfilling the FOI request, um, you know, you, you may find that you're not being prompt or that you're treating people differently based on who they are, um, and really you should be trying to, to be uniform in how you're handling these across the board. So, the last thing I wanna talk about with, with records is, um, so, you know, when I read the definition of public record in there, there's a part where it says that, um, you know, accept is otherwise provided by any federal law or state statute. So, the important thing to know about FOIA in Connecticut is that, the way it works is, everything is a public record and unless there's either another law at the state or federal level, or there's an exemption within our law, and I'll, I'll touch on a few of those in a minute, and then those are also in that little handout I gave you, it goes through some of the more common ones. So, unless there's another law or there's an exemption in, in the FOI Act, um, people are entitled to public records, the presumption is disclosure. Um, but a couple, you know, the challenge with the exemptions, or with the exceptions, rather, is that these are all throughout the state statutes and, and some of them make sense and some of them don't make a whole lot of sense. Like, one example I, I always give when I do these is, um, if you didn't know, and I don't do this to pick on teachers, my wife is a teacher, um, you know, support our teachers, but if you're a public school teacher, your employee evaluations are off limits from FOIA. You cannot make an FOI request for a, a public school teacher's evaluation. You can FOI a police officer's evaluation or firefighter's evaluation, but teachers, because there's a statute that was passed, um, they're exempt. So, the challenge with FOIA is, there's all these other, you know, different little parts out there, um, you know, dealing with certain types of records, you know, dealing with public health records and dealing with land use records and so, um, you know, i- you know, we'll talk about the bigger ones, but, you know, it's, it's always something that, um, you know, you wanna be mindful of. Um, but the important thing about that is, you know, if you're getting an FOI request, I always tell people, if you're gonna deny someone's FOI request, you should really be thinking based, you know, based on the law, you know, where do I have the ability to do that? Is it another state law somewhere that says, this information is confidential, you know, if it's dealing with, you know, juvenile arrest records, you know, that's not, some of that's found in our law, some of that's found in other, other, other parts of the statute. So, um, you know, you can't just say, I'm not gonna give the person the emails because I don't like them, or I'm not gonna give the person the emails because, you know, I, I'm afraid what they're gonna do with them. Um, you know, unless there's a particular, you know, exemption in our law or there's an exception in another state law, the person is entitled to those public records. Um, so, I'm gonna go through a couple of the more common exemptions and then we'll take, you know, any, any questions you have on records. So, um, one exemption that may come up here on the council is preliminary drafts or notes. Um, I, I alluded to this earlier, but there's an exemption in the law that says, you don't have to give out anything that is, it's a preliminary draft or personal note. So, personal notes, think of this as things that, you know, you may take during a meeting as a memory aid, you know, you're in an executive session and you're writing things down, um, so you can kinda remember what happened during the executive session. If they're personal notes that you don't share with other people, you're not typing it up into an email and sending it to the whole council, um, those are personal notes that could be exempt from disclosure under FOIA. And then preliminary drafts is, usually it's the type of staff work that precedes something before it's submitted to the council for consideration. Once something is on the agenda, once you guys receive it in your packet, um, you know, it's a report, it's an update, it's, you know, whatever it may be, once it comes to the council for consideration, um, it's a public record. But before that point, when the staff are working on it, they're adding things, they're changing things, um, you know, th- there's this limited period of time where something could be a draft and you don't need to release it until it's in its final form. But again, once it goes to, to the board, um, and, and it's, you know, ready to be having an action taken on it, um, then at that point, it's no longer preliminary draft, it would need to be disclosed, whatever, whatever the, the record may be. Um, next, I'm gonna talk about personnel files. Um, so, the important thing to know about personnel files is that, the only information in personnel files that's exempt under FOIA is information that poses an invasion of personal privacy. And the two things you wanna take into consideration when you're dealing with personnel, uh, files and invasion of personal privacy, is information that, it needs to be information that's highly offensive and does not pertain to a matter of public concern. When you think about especially that second one there, not a matter of public concern, um, there's a lot of information in employee personnel files that people may not want released. But again, that's not the standard, just because something is embarrassing, um, you know, maybe we got caught, you know, looking at Facebook at work three days in a row and we got written up for it, you know, we may not want that to be all over the newspaper for people to know about that. Um, but if it pertains to, you know, public employees doing their job, not doing their job, are they doing it well, um, you know, those types of things, you know, those, those are the things that need to be disclosed. The type of information that you don't have to disclose, um, health information, you know, medical records, you know, somebody going out on FMLA, you know, and they're sending an email to their boss explaining what's going on, those types of things, um, you know, things that are in our personnel files that relate to family situations, um, employees applying for an employee assistance program, seeking mental health counseling, you know, those types of things where it involves a public employee, but it's really not something that is a matter of public concern. Uh, but if it pertains to, you know, the employee's pay or, or, or what they're doing at work, you know, those are the types of things, um, that, that need to be disclosed. Um, and then some of the other exemptions, you know, we already talked about, you know, attorney-client privilege, there's a records exemption for security, you know, you don't have to release any records that could pose a security risk if they were to be released, um, you know, this could be security plans. Um, it also could be in some instances, um, you know, sometimes you'll get a records request and you may feel that, uh, I think if I release this information, it's gonna potentially put somebody in harm's way. Um, if that's ever the case, what you do when you seek that security, uh, exemption is, at the municipal level, your mayor would go to the state police and would say, look, we got this records request in, we think if we release this information to this Requester, there's a security risk, and the state police would do an assessment and then they would determine, and if they agree that there was a security risk, you wouldn't release the records. And if someone were to file a complaint, they would basically back you up and say, yes, you know, we, we determined that if we released these certain records to this person, um, it would pose a security risk. Um, and then the last exemption that I'll talk about, just because it also does come up sometimes at, at councils, is trade secrets. So, um, sometimes this comes up if you're doing, you know, the city's a vendor, you know, doing business with a certain, um, company, you know, you guys were talking earlier about, you know, police body cameras. Um, if a company shares some kind of proprietary information with, with a public agency that they don't share publicly on their website, that they only, you know, share with customers, a lot of times it could be pricing information or things like that, um, it becomes a public record because the city is a public entity, um, but if it's a trade secret, then the city doesn't need to release that information in response to an FOI request. So, this is when, you know, outside companies are doing business, they share certain information, um, again, only because the city's doing business with them, they wouldn't share it otherwise, so the city doesn't need to pass that along, um, in the form of an FOI request. Um, so, anyone have any questions on, on records requests or processing records requests or emails or text messages?
Question from Councilor Sheffield?
Um, yes, what if there is, uh, email correspondence that might have been executive session, uh, information? Is that disclosable once it gets to an email?
It would be disclosable in an email, so, I, what I would really strongly encourage you is, you know, pick up the phone and call people if you're trying to talk about executive session, because again, executive session is, um, it's your ability to discuss, but there's not a records exemption for the records that, that you create, um, if that makes sense. Same thing with a caucus, there's no, um, there's nothing in FOIA that says, if it relates to executive session, the records are, are exempt. So, you can go into executive session for your discussion, but if you write up an email, um, about it afterwards, unless it was, you know, attorney-client privilege or, or something like that, if it was just recounting what happened, you know, somebody could make a FOIA request for that email.
Well, what if, well, I'm not, I'm not done at the moment. Um, what if it became an outside party that received an executive session email?
So, the, um, you're asking, could somebody, could someone FOIA it from outside or?
Yes, some side, outside that email executive session information, would that be?
So, there's no, there's no penalty under FOIA for basically, I think I, I get, I understand where you're coming from, there's no, um, there's no violation of FOIA of like breaching the confidence of an executive session. Um, you know, you could, you could leave executive session tonight and you could go on your blog and you could post everything that happened and you're gonna anger your fellow counselors, right, because they're gonna be mad because you guys were supposed to keep it, um, you know, together in executive session, um, but there's no, there's no FOIA violation of, of breaching that executive session confidence, is that what you were wondering?
Well, if, can someone request an executive session, uh, information that happened to be somebody from an outside party that had knowledge of an executive session, can that be FOIA requested?
Yeah, so, so if you, if, if someone knew an executive session happened, they could make a request for any, any documents related to that executive session. Where things could potentially be exempt, depending on what it is, is like if you had a personnel, um, let's say you had an executive session and you were discussing like a settlement of a lawsuit, that lawsuit settlement could be exempt under attorney-client privilege or it could be exempt under records related to, you know, pending claims or litigation, um, or if it was a, you know, potentially you could be in executive session reviewing, um, you know, let's say, your fire chief was going on an extended sick leave and you were just, you know, reviewing things related to that sick leave, maybe those records are exempt. Um, but if it is just, you know, an email recounting what happened, if it's just sort of, this is what happened in the executive session, um, I would say those would, that would need to be disclosed. So, you wanna be mindful with executive session, um, you know, you can take personal notes, you know, as, as I said, so you can write things down, so you remember what happened. Um, and maybe that could be, you know, an email to yourself or something like that, just getting your thoughts, um, but if you start discussing what happened in the executive Um, but if you start discussing what happened in the executive session outside of the executive session on an email or on a text message, um, somebody could FOIA those, those messages.
Well, that's interesting that you brought that up because I never thought you could take notes in executive session. We never had before, but that's something.
Yeah, I, I think a lot of times people caution you not to for the very reasons that we're talking about, but if it was strictly, you know, strictly, again, you're writing things down on a little.
Right, for your own.
For your own, so you remember.
Right, right, not to disclose it, but just to have your own.
Yeah, not to share with other people.
Exactly. All right.
Okay, so let me tell you how I try to run executive sessions and we've been successful thus far. So when we're in executive session, what I say is what is said in executive session stays in executive session, it's not to be discussed outside or we wouldn't be in executive session. So it should not be discussed publicly, even amongst themselves after they're outside of executive session. If there are any handouts that are, uh, provided, then we take those up at the end and put them out because again, I go back to if this was going to be discussed publicly, then we should have had it publicly and not in executive session. Uh, the, the thing about, that you just talked about, about people taking notes, you could take notes, but I'm not sure why you would need to take notes to refresh your memory necessarily on something, uh, although sometimes we do have votes coming out of that. But, uh, so, you know, I, I've tried to run a fairly tight executive session under the, the way that I was trained, that executive session you're disco, it's not public, so therefore keep it in executive session.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think that makes a lot of sense. Um, a- a- again, you, you, you know, you, the notes thing is limited, you know, but, but, but the challenge is, is that somebody could still request those notes. I saw, you know, I, and then you would have to prove the exemption. So if you can do nothing, that's even better. Um, but I just say that because sometimes people ask, you know, are you telling me I can't write anything down? You know, if it's just a little bit because it's got to, you know, maybe, maybe it's an executive session and then the next meeting is when you're going to vote on it or something, I, you know, I don't know. But, um, but certainly not sending emails after executive session, um, you know, you don't want to be doing that, even if it's to a fellow counselor, because there's not an exemption for that.
Councilor Sheffield?
Uh, yeah, I mean, following up on that, like I said, about taking notes, some people have different memory retention than others. So we can't, you know, somebody can remember photographally what they read and, you know, have an idea of what's going on. Some people may need that additional writing to, for recollection, because like I said, not everybody's memory's the same. So that's, that would be my only issue. Sure, I wouldn't go out and recommend taking notes because we've never done it, but if someone may need to, you know, as far as someone even knew that needs to take a few things down to, you know, help them out moving forward, I mean, that's, that's something that would be a reason to take notes, but again, not to disclose it publicly.
Yeah, the, um, the reason I keep saying memory aid is because the cases we've had on notes, that's kind of where the commission has come down, is we've said, look, if it's really just something for your own recollection, again, that you don't share with anyone, you're not walking out of here and, and sending emails about it, you know, it's strictly just, I just want to write something down so I remember a point about something I need to bring up later, you know, that, that's it. But the challenge is if somebody could request it and if you say, no, I'm not going to give you my notes, you could still have to potentially go to a commission meeting and hearing and explain all these things. So if you don't take any notes, then, you know, you avoid that issue.
Right, and that's of course if they just think they, if you did take notes, if they don't know if you took notes at all, then yeah.
Exactly, then they don't, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions or comments on this? Councilor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm thinking about emails, let's say are, are none, our own personal email. So let's say I'm thinking right now, like, uh, so my daughter's going to go to college and I'm traveling, let's say, to a college. So is there anything that says when you're out of state, if you were communicating, say, oh, I forgot my packet, could you send that to my personal email? Or if I go over, she's looking to go out of country and I do that, would that, does that void anything in any way, shape or form? Does it have to be within a certain parameter of Connecticut or something like that? Can it be sent to our personal emails or?
Um, so.
I'm, I'm just even talking about just an agenda per se.
Sure, so I don't think where you are, when would matter. It, it, again, it's, it's the content. So if it's a, you know, i- if it's the, the council agenda being sent to your personal email, then because it relates to council business, somebody could, you know, FOIA that particular email. Again, it doesn't mean they get anything else, it would only be things that are related to, um, to council business, but the key thing is, is the content, you know, of, of the email. So if you're, you know, like if you're going to be traveling for the summer and you tell people, and I know sometimes this happens because, um, it happens with the state system too, where if you're other places, you can't log into it or it kicks you out because it thinks you're trying to hack or something like that.
Right.
So for example, if you guys were working on a project and you told everyone, hey, I'm going to be on my personal email and they're sending you information about the project, you know, during that period of time, those would be the emails that you would potentially need to, to give out under a FOIA. And again, this is only if someone requests it. So if somebody said, I want all your emails, you know, on the school building project, if you sent some of those from your personal, you would need to include those with what you sent from your, your city email.
Okay, gotcha.
Any other question or comments on this? Okay? Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anything else that you wanted to discuss?
Um, I just.
We're a little bit over an hour, but.
Yeah, the, the last thing I just want to give out is, um, I'll give my phone number, um, is eight six oh, um, five six six, five six eight two. Um, call or email with any, you know, the email for us is FOI@CT.gov, so it's easy to remember. Um, really call or email, you know, with any questions.
On the back of the card, just in case.
It's on there too. I know we went through a lot, you know, pretty quickly, um, but, um, you know, things come up down the line, um, you know, I think your mayor can attest, if you, if you call us or email us, we'll get you an answer. Um, you know, and if, if I don't know the answer, try to find someone who does. Uh, the good thing with FOIA is because it's 50 years old, um, there's a lot of precedent in things like that, so you may think you're dealing with something that hasn't happened before, chances are we've had something similar. So, um, really happy to give advice or, or guidance on, on anything that comes up. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you for coming out.
Yep.
Okay, uh, moving on, new Eastern Point Historic District application. Uh, this was a, this, um, was an application to be on the historic district. The chair is aware, as a matter of fact, he talked to this individual upcoming on as an alternate and the liaison, uh, staff liaison also has talked to this individual and has recommended that I move this to the council. So any questions or comments on this? I think I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting on February twentieth, twenty twenty four.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extension, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we have council rules and regulations. We have sent this out. Uh, there was a markup that we, originally we sent out the mayor and council minutes, meetings, correction, mayor and council rules as they were, and then, uh, the clerk and I did some research and there were a couple of things that, uh, uh, we looked at, possibly adding if the council's interested in having us to the rules. But I will open the floor for discussion on the rules. Uh, Deputy Mayor Depot?
Um, oh, I just wanted to comment because one of the edits is on the rules for reconsideration.
Right.
Um, which the additions are in line with Robert's rules.
That's correct.
Um, but the, like previously it was kind of abbreviated, it wasn't all in there. So I, I think it does make sense if we're going to mention it to have the complete, uh, details, the way you've added it. So I, I like that addition because I think it's more, more clear.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments on the rules? Councilor Piazza?
In reference to this, I thought we had discussed at one time having a committee about, wasn't it about forming a committee you were going to put out to who was in, interested in making a committee for Robert's rules? Am I mistaken? Something to that effect, you had asked who was interested in it?
So we have a rules committee.
Okay.
And that is Deputy Mayor Depot, you, and Councilor Sheffield. So there's a rules committee so that if we have an issue during a meeting and there's a question as to what the rules say or what the rules mean, then we can, uh, recess and then let the, the rules committee have a special meeting and discuss it and then come back with the recommendations.
Like it states in here?
Yes, ma'am.
Per se. Okay, so with that said, is there, um, does that committee meet on a regular, uh, agenda? Or is it just for that specific time? So we're, that committee that would say, uh, we want to take a meeting because we questioned something and then we decide we, we need a meeting, a quick meeting and we meet and then we come back. So it's only for that purpose, right? We're not regularly meeting to.
Were you asking, because you got a lot in there.
Sorry.
Ask me your question.
Um, okay, so the main question is, is that committee meeting on like quarterly or anything to discuss anything that's come up of like, oh, we have these, uh, you know, these updates, blah, blah, blahs, you know, anything like that?
It, well, if you looked at the original emails that I sent, that this, the rules had only been changed like once in the last ten or fifteen years.
Mm-hmm.
So typically the rules committee does not meet at a specified interval. If the rules committee feels that they want to meet, then they can set up a meeting for that. Typically the rules committee, uh, it comes up if during a council meeting, somebody states a rule and then there's a question about what does that rule mean? Or do we need to change the rules or do we need to add rules? Then the rules committee would then meet. And now, if it, uh, if it pertains to that specific meeting, uh, recess, they'd go off, have a meeting, have a special meeting, come back and then rule on that. If, uh, there could be a referral to the rules committee, I'd like to add this or I'd like to talk about this section of the rules and those kinds of things. So does that answer your question?
Yes, and so just with that, uh, answer, thank you, is so all that's in red, this will be, uh, retyped in the original thing and they'll be sent to us or?
This is, so, uh, we did track changes so that you can see everything that we changed.
Yep.
If, if, uh, this council, if you're okay with this now, I'll ask to move this to the mayor and council of two twenty twenty, twenty twenty four, and then you'll vote on it. It'll come back in a clean copy and you'll vote on that next week.
Okay, the reason I was asking was like, let's say if we, at a, you know, next meeting, we decided we wanted to meet, we want to recess, we want to discuss it, blah, 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 is it, could we use this or will we have to wait for the formal, formal printout with no red in it? That's what I'm saying. You know, like if I, if somebody.
I don't understand your question. Ask me that a different way.
So if we have our, in our next meeting?
Yes.
And then, um, there's a question about the rules, whatever, and Deputy Mayor Depot and I and, uh, Councilor Sheffield, we decide that we need to have a discussion, we go for recess, and this is the only thing, let's say that I have or we have, can we refer back to this like, oh, I think the rule said and, no, let me double check rule number five, blah, blah, blah. We can use this, yes or no? This, this.
Okay, all right. So right now, the council is operating under the current rules.
Mm-hmm.
Until the new rules are adopted.
Right.
Does, does that answer your question?
It does.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other question? Uh, Deputy Mayor Depot?
Uh, just a clerical thing, this was obviously copied from last year.
Yes, we, what did we miss?
So the counselor names are not updated.
Mm-hmm.
At the bottom, which I'm.
I don't know how we missed that. Okay, you are correct.
It's at the end.
We'll update that and we'll fix it. Update, uh, that will be corrected in the, uh, for next week. Yeah, we missed that. Any other questions or comments? Councilor Sheffield?
I'd like to make changes in, uh, let's see, on rule seven, section C, subsection C.
All right. C subsection C, okay?
Uh, saying, address each other as counselor last name, avoid personal attacks, avoid alluding to improper motives on the part of a fellow counselor, avoid actions that disturb council meeting discussion. I would like to get rid of the personal attacks part, uh, it sounds like we're at a news, news show with that, with that term. I would like to change that to make it more legislatively, uh, professional as far as using any, uh, derogatory, intimidating comments, uh, towards any particular, uh, counselor.
So what language would you like to do?
I'd like to get rid of the avoid.
So you want to avoid personal attacks?
Yeah, I'd like to get rid of that.
Okay, and what would you like to put in its place?
Uh, no, uh, derogatory or intimidating comments.
Okay.
I would also, yeah, I would also like to add, um, no comments that, uh, and I guess maybe to include no comments about one's race.
Where do you want?
Gender.
All right, hold on. Where do you want to put that, under C?
Yeah, we'll keep that on C unless we want to.
Well, where, all right, where would it go?
Um, unless, unless we add a D to it maybe, um.
Well, if the derogatory, intimidating comments toward a fellow counselor?
Yeah.
Would the section that you're about to talk about, would that not be included in those comments?
Right, yeah, we'll keep it there.
And you could put including.
Including, right.
Blah, 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 what you want, what you're about to say now.
Yep, uh, like I said, uh, race.
Like you see in the job app, race, religion, gender, so forth and so on.
Well, what are we? Okay, what are we including? Or am I looking this up on title seven and putting that in there? What, what, what is it you want included?
Go ahead, Christine.
I'm just thinking of, uh, you know, in a job application, they usually say you're not, there's race, religion, gender, what else? Is there usually? There's about four or five.
Well, I know we use ethnicities, that's, could be part of it, but, um.
Including race?
Yep, uh.
Race, religion, gender?
Yep.
Okay?
Ethnicity, I think it is, yeah.
Including what? You want to change race to ethnicity?
Uh, you could use both.
Okay, including race, ethnicity?
Yeah. Religion, gender.
I think also, I think in there's disabilities.
Disa, yes, there are also disabilities, sure, that's a good call.
I think, when you, when you shaking your head.
Okay, all right. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Um, I just want to make a comment. I, I understand that, um, trying to maybe clarify, but the, the phrase personal attacks is a commonly used phrase for rules and regulations, for boards and commissions in general. Um, I don't think we should remove that language because I think it encompasses what we're trying to do with all of that other language, because that's all about your person. So I think that's why the, the phrase personal attacks is used commonly in these types of rules and regulations to cover all of those items. And I am reluctant to add those terms in because then, at what point, like can you not refer to those things about a person? You know, and we get into kind of a, it, it, it becomes subjective if you're just adding, also these things can't be referenced or, and then are we just rewriting the whole thing? Um, I, I don't, I, I feel like the word, the phrase personal attacks encompasses the rest of those things.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Well.
Why do you not think so? Well, hold on, go ahead. Deputy Mayor Depot, you have the floor.
If, if the intent is for someone not to make a comment about someone's race, religion, ethnicity, disability, any of those things, those would all be included in the definition of a personal attack. Um, so I, that's why, you know, I think, and I, as you said, the clerk and yourself referenced other rules to put these rules, so it, it, there's a reason that language is commonly used and it is partly to make the rules concise so that we're not rewriting title seven or whatever that thing is. Um, so that's just my thought, is I would re, prefer it to be concise. Um, and if we're going to elaborate, maybe it would be more appropriate for counselors to send in their inclusive on the whole paragraph, um, to the clerk to compare what everyone's input is and then, um, put it together rather than orally.
Trying to, yeah, I agree.
Going back and forth.
Councilor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. I think, so we either need to really minimize it, uh, because you could go on and on and on. So with what, uh, Mayor Deputy, uh, Deputy Mayor Depot was saying and Councilor Sheffield. So it just reminds me of just re, recently re, reading our employee harassment rules and regulations. So when you have avoid personal con, uh, attacks, that can be underneath anybody's interpretation. I could say, and your black cat, I mean, what about that one scratching all over? He could take that personally, I don't think it is. And the harassment part in our job says, somebody could bite at you and you think it's a biting thing, it's harassing, but then they say if it's, it's continuous. So it really is under a matter of interpretation, then you have somebody else looking at it and saying, this is what we say. Counselor Sheffield could make a, a complaint about what I said about his cat and then it would be, it would go underneath an umbrella of somebody else that would interpret that. So I think avoid personal attacks is really broad. Um, and it's also, you usually don't see, I have not seen it, personal attacks and race, religion, so forth and so on. Is that fall underneath it? It does, but it's usually not put together because that's underneath, when you start saying race, religion, gender, that is specifically very clear. And that also, when there's a complaint about it, that's handled much differently. When we talk about personal attacks, I mean, Counselor Sheffield could say, well, I don't like how you, you know, with you, your crooked plate, nameplate, and I could take that as a personal attack. When do we start discussing that? When is a personal attack? Or is that just a bite and please don't say that or stop, you know, stop? You know, so I, I'm not, I think we're starting to get into a lot of verbiage here. And, uh, I mean, when you look at, um, alluding to improper motives of a part of a fellow counselor, that's left under a major interpretation, like who's to say who's avoiding and alluding to improper motives? So it's, so I'm, I'm wondering if we should just go back to, you know, that when we're speaking, when we're looking at this, uh, so I'm trying to understand, unless recognized by the mayor, I understand that, the maker of a motion, see, confined remarks to the merit of the penny, uh, I'm sorry, C, B, I'm not sure if these should, A, B, C, and then one, two, three. Usually letters don't follow letters and the outlines I was taught, but, um, anyway, on C, I'm sorry, B, C, B, address all remarks through the mayor. So our remarks in our discussion is just to you? I wouldn't, I'm trying to understand that.
Okay, and, and a lot of times when we have conduct and debate, the way it's, and if you look at Robert's rules, instead of getting into a debate back and forth with each other, it goes to me and then I moderate.
Okay, I got it.
That way you don't get into attacking.
Right. Right.
someone else, or questioning someone else's motives, or whatever, I mean, it could, so it would be, it would be great if we could just say, C, be nice, but we're, we're not going to get there. I mean, there's a reason, I mean, we, the clerk and I looked at, uh, some other towns, and this is common language that's used. As a matter of fact, I think some of this language is also used in the, in the towns' rules, is that close? Okay?
Okay, so I, that was going to be one of my questions.
Not to say that we need to follow what the town said, does, but the reason I bring that up is that it is consistent with a local municipality that, uh, has meetings similar to us.
And that's what was your meaning behind that, you, both of you had done research, so you were actually researching what other verbiage has been used, and what would be the most fitting for the rules to add in here, I guess?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
And just to clarify, the rules, the interpretation of the rules is done by the chair of the meeting, which is the mayor, correct? So if there was a question of, if I think something's a personal attack and someone else doesn't, it is the chair's job to, uh, adjudicate that and/or decide what to do as a result of that, correct?
That's correct. That's where point of order comes in. So the point of order is not, so I think people sometimes get confused, and when a point of order is called, it's not against an individual, it's the chair, it's point of order. What's your point of order, meaning that chair, you're losing control of your meeting, or you're not following the rules that either we have written here, or Roberts Rules? And then they make the point, they rule on the point, uh, the chair rules on the point, if the, uh, there is a, there is a process to where you could say, you know, I want to review the ruling, and there's a process on how to do that. Or you?
Well, I, I just, and I just wanted to, these rules are not all encompassing, our council still follows Roberts Rules of Order as well, which elaborates on some of these issues, I think, just, I do think that most boards include a similar concise kind of rules of order, like decorum section. Um, but there is more, Roberts Rules might contain even more than that, which is also part of our rules that we follow. But these are supposed to be kind of concise.
Okay, Counselor Sheffield?
Yes, I've read Roberts Rules, uh, the, the Webster's version, and it does, it's, you know, all these, you know, Roberts Rules is quite old, and it doesn't have the new issues that have taken place over the last eight to 10 years. And I've, uh, printed out an article regarding, um, intimidation and abuse that have taken place in, in council meetings. And it was over thirteen hundred across the country last year of intimidation and abuse that have taken place at town council meetings, and along with state legislatures. So this is where, to me, um, we need to, I think, have a set, uh, a blueprint for the future, not about what for right now, but down the road, because we're all not going to be counselors forever, that future councils can refer to the conduct of, of their office that they're, that they're serving. And this is where it becomes all those things that, uh, that I've touched upon, is about, you know, race, gender, ethnicity, religion. We have plenty of those problems going on in the country right now. And I think this would be a fine time to put something together like that, instead of just generalizing the personal attacks, which that's what I see on TV every day. And it doesn't really specify what the problem is, it just says, all right, a personal attack, but in what way? You know, so this kind of defines it better, and I think, um, we should refine it more now as things have, uh, you know, progressed.
Okay, the purpose of these rules is not to set the foundation for future generations of counselors. The purpose of these rules is for the next year, how this council is going to operate when we conduct mayor and council meetings, and when we conduct committee and whole meetings. That's the purpose of these rules. So I wanted to make sure that we understand why we have these rules, uh, and what the purpose of the rules are, so.
Well, it seems like we lost that purpose in the last term, and that's why I think we need to solidify that now, and nip things solidly for, for down the line. So, I think, uh, I think this, to me is-
Go ahead, please.
So that's why I think this would be, to me, a, a good start. And, uh, and like I said, I understand the personal attacks part, but I think it's, it's too broad in general, and I think we should fine tune it, and, uh, you know, just in case there's problems down the road. We, God forbid, we don't think it'll have that effect, but to me, I, I'd like to see that set up to, uh, where there's no gray area.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Depot?
Um, if there's, uh, more elaborate additions that we want to do to the rules, I would think that we might either have counselors contact, send the actual, what the wording that they're interested in adding to the clerk, or refer it to the Rules Committee if it's a larger issue, a larger issue.
Right, so what I'm going to recommend is that you, you send me your write-up. Have this marked up, send it to me, and, uh, send it to me, and send it to the clerk. And then we can add it here for evaluation for next week, if, should you, should this council decide they want to move this to next week. Counselor Norris? I'm sorry, Counselor Telly?
Thank you.
I didn't see, I didn't see your hand, my apologies.
I see your point, and I see where you want to go with this. But I feel like if we fine tune it, where do you stop? Because there's so many different things that you can add, we're forgetting sexual orientation, gender identity, all of these things. So I just don't know if we try to add all of these things where, where do we say, okay, that's good, you know?
Okay, Counselor Norris?
If I can agree with you, because what I, I was going to say two things. One, what would be interesting is, benchmarking is fine, but the folks we're benchmarking with, when did they update their rule? Because if they did it back in the eighties, or even the nineties, it may not be relevant today. The sad thing I, I was going to add is, you know, we're bouncing around words that even now are not words that we should be using or taking to consideration. Because, you know, I'm pick, just talking about the word gender, there's so many people that don't identify with a gender. If you ask them, what's your gender, they go, I don't have one, you know? So, you're absolutely right, I, I think keeping it as broad as possible is something we should be doing. And having the mayor have the flexibility to understand that if I say something and you're offended, there's a look from you to him, and he goes, I get it, and shuts me down. So that's one thing. And the third thing, I'm sorry, I only said two, but I do have a third thing. This is a breathable document. And in my mind, looking at this, this is the way we're going to govern for the next year, year and a half, two, I don't know how many months we have left. And then it can be changed as we move forward. But I would caution that we do not get into specific details as much as possible, and we just leave it broad stroke as in, I don't know if personal attacks is the right word, but that encompasses a lot. So, that, that, that's my thought.
So to answer one of your questions, uh, the town council reviews their rules every year, and they update them pretty much every year. So, I know you know from the town council's point of view, that information is fresh. Other places that we pull from, we, I had Danny reach out to other clerks and look and see what, you know, the rules are, and, uh, this is general language that a lot of the councils currently use. And most councils are reviewing their rules every year, so.
Thank you.
Do you want to say anything? I'll give you an opportunity.
No.
Okay. Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. I, so I thi- I agree, I, I agree with a lot of things. So I, if we do, I, I tend to lend more toward the simple. I understand what Counselor Sheffield is saying, you know, and do we want to put those words in there? In some ways, I think, so when you look at pay, if you look at a pay position, say, of the mayor, and if Deputy Mayor had to step into that, she would fall underneath the same thing. It does say job description, and it does say how you're going to conduct yourself. So I think if we kept it simple, and that mantle is on you. Or if it was on Deputy Mayor Depot, and somebody says, however they want to, uh, give that via look, via verbal complaint, I, I feel that's a personal attack. I'm not even sure if we need to put that in. If we wanted to really strip it back, like you were saying, because we can get into a lot of things, it's a leave as, address all remarks through the mayor, and then if number C is just, and like you said, leaving it out there if we should say anything or not. I think I would do probably two parts to it. If we do, I'd like to have this. If we don't, then I would strike C, and then leave it underneath your mantle because there is a job description and how we're supposed to conduct ourselves, and that would fall underneath all the meetings that we have. And so whether it's the, it's a look, or it's a, somebody says something to you specifically, and I mean, then it falls underneath that because you're addressing us according to that job description, and how ethically that the mayor and all of us are supposed to
So, as-
be at a meeting.
As the chair, the, the, the way, if, if there is a perceived violation of the rules, or of, of these rules, or of Roberts Rules, don't give me a look, because I'm going to miss it. Okay, so what you, what you, so what you, what you, the, the, the proper way is point of order. And I'll say, what is your point? Decorum. And then if you, and, and this talks about conduct of debate decorum. And if I, if, well, you can leave it at decorum, or I could say, could you explain further? And then if you have your meetings, you could say, uh, no personal attacks, or those kind of things, and then that's clear. And then, you, you, you know, if, if something is said that may be offensive, it may be if, so it doesn't matter if it's offensive to me or not, it matters if it's offensive to the person who's calling the point of order, and then they will say, point of order, what's your point? And then they'll say decorum, or specifically personal attacks, or use of language, and then the chair rules, and then we go from there. Is that, is that reasonable? Counselor Sheffield?
Now, if there's violations of the rules, and they'll say, we don't agree with your order, would that then go to the Rules Committee to be referred as far as if something is not agreed upon?
So if, so, so you don't, you do not agree on my ruling?
Right.
So if you don't agree on my ruling, there's a procedure in Roberts Rules that where you can appeal the ruling, and I don't remember that off the top of my head, because we haven't had to deal with that, uh, in the past. Typically, the reason I wanted to get this in here was because this has happened. It doesn't, it had, it did not typically happen in open session. It happened, uh, when it happened, it happened during executive session, but it's still not right. Okay, so, uh, but there is a procedure, but if, uh, so there is a procedure in Roberts Rules about how to adjudicate that. And then if you needed to send this back to, uh, the Rules Committee, you could.
Well, that would be my next thing, is if, if there was a subsection D, or maybe number four, would be any questions of Ra- of any of the rules, along with Roberts Rules, to be referred to the Rules Committee in executive session for, uh, I want to, I, the, the word analysis wouldn't be the right thing, but, uh, what's that?
Review?
Yeah, review.
Well, I wouldn't limit it to executive session.
What's that?
I would not limit it to executive session. These rules are going to be for all of our meetings.
Yeah, but I'd say disputes of it would be the issue. Anything of disputing the violations of the rules would go into Rules Committee.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Depot?
A, a few things. Um, the Rules Committee is not, de- debating a rule is not a reason to go into executive session. Um, so we wouldn't be able to have an executive session to discuss a rule violation. Um, but also, um, if there's a rule violation, and the chair makes a decision, and someone wants to appeal that decision, they can say, I appealed the decision of the chair, and they have to get a second to that motion
Correct.
in order, I'm not, um, so it would be done in the same meeting in public, it wouldn't be referred
Would not be referred.
to the Rules Committee necessarily right away, and if we did refer something to the Rules Committee, it would have to be in a public meeting. It can't be in executive session. That does not fall under any guidelines that would allow us to have executive session.
Correct. That is correct. Counselor Sheffield?
Yeah, it would be, uh, during the meeting, you can, uh, make a motion to suspend the rules, to go into executive session to discuss that violation. It's, it is possible. But you can, like I said, you would have to make that motion. Obviously, if it doesn't get, uh, if it doesn't pass amongst the council to go into executive session, then it doesn't happen.
Okay, let me address this this way. We just had training on FOIA and on executive session, so if it does not meet the five things to go in executive session, you can't go into executive session. So you got to meet those five things to go into executive session. You don't get to go in executive session because you don't want to discuss something in public. We, we don't get, we don't get to do that. He said that. Okay, so right now, I'm inclined, I'm going to leave this like it is. But if Counselor Sheffield submits it, uh, what we could do is, you know, we'll look and see if we want to add it, or if we want to, when it comes time to vote, an amendment to the, you can do, that's really the proper way, is to do amendment, and then the council votes on whether or not they want to accept amendment to that rule, uh, to the, uh, the document, and the council will vote yes or no, and it either gets added or not. Counselor Sheffield?
Well, yeah, these are all amendments to these rules anyway, correct?
So what you are doing is you are vote, this is the recommendation for the new rules. These will be your new rules for this year, or for this term, rather. Any other questions or comments? May I take a motion? Counselor Piazza, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so when we do email, we're just emailing it to you, it's not to everybody, and it's just-
You are not emailing it to everybody, you're emailing it to me and, and, and the clerk. But I think, I think the, I think the right way to do this would be to take it as an amendment. So we, we take these, I don't know, we, we're going to need to talk about how we're going to do this, whether we take it as an amendment, and then we bring it up that, that time, or we, we put it in here, and then discuss how to do that. Yeah, Deputy Mayor Depot?
My, my thing is if we wait and do an amendment orally on something like this, I think we might lose the intent of whoever is trying to make the amendment, because there's so many words and so much discussion. So I think that even though we could just make an amendment at the next meeting of whatever rule, I think having it in writing in advance, so that the other counselors can consider that amendment would be helpful, because I think that it's going to be difficult to know which amendment is which, or which person's proposing which part without having it in writing, just specific to this topic. I, in general, we don't usually have that problem. I think with this topic in, in particular, because it's also like a technical thing a little bit,
Yeah.
I think that it should still be an amendment, just that the counselors can submit in advance for clarity and better consideration when it comes time to vote on it.
Okay. So in general, are, is the council okay with these rules here? And then we'll take the amendments as they come, and then we'll add them. That way, the only thing that will be of a different color and a change will be the amendments.
I, I just, um,
How do you, how do you propose that we proceed?
I'm proposing, like, if we're going to, so we're actually saying that we're going to vote that this is, is sustainable presently, and then as we email you, what, when, when would we actually allow the, the suggested amendments? When would that happen, and how soon could we actually change it? Because otherwise, I wouldn't want to vote on something if I don't know my amendments can be addressed, considered, and so forth.
Then here's what we'll do. We'll move this, instead of moving it to the mayor and council, we'll move it to the next Cal. And that way, we can fully discuss it at the next Cal.
And still email you our suggestions, and we can discuss them.
And still email the suggestions, and we'll get them put in here. Suggestions, and we'll get them put in here. And we will continue to operate under the current rules that we have until, uh, council agrees and votes on new rules. Is council okay with that? So, Danny will move this, will keep this to the next Cal, which is actually only two weeks away, right? So... And the last thing is the, the, uh, resolutions for children's first donation request. What I have placed at your, uh, seats is a history of the children, gotten, excuse me, of the children's first gotten request and award, and the current, and by year, how much money that we've awarded, and for this year. So for 2024, so far, we've only, your council has only authorized, uh, $2,000. So, uh, they have asked before, the council has, uh, awarded before, and so... And they have their requests attached. Any comments, Deputy Mayor Depot?
I think we still have not, in any recent years, or any of the years, gotten to the $5,000 mark that we are allowed. So, in my opinion, despite the fact that they have applied every year, I, I don't foresee us not having the funds to give it to them. Um, even if we were to have, you know, one or two new people apply, uh, I think we would still have the funds available. So, in my opinion, I, I do think we should continue to contribute to, um, children first. I think it's a, a good cause. They do a lot of good, um, good things for a bunch of different programs.
And, and they also team with other
Right.
nonprofit agencies. So, any other questions or comments? I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of two twenty, 2024.
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extension, motion carries. Okay, I will take a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 1-206A, personnel, Public Works Department, Director of Public Works, to include mayor and council, and the director of public works.
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, we are in executive session, so we'll kill our Danny, I'll take notes when you come out of executive session and devote and everything like I normally do.